All right, we'd like to welcome you to the Provo City Planning Commission meeting. We've got a full house today and we're really excited to have you here. Today. Today is January 8th at 6:00 PM and we'd like to start this meeting off with the pledge of allegiance given by Commissioner Gonzalez.
..................
All right. I'll give a roll call as commissioners.
Adam Shin, no conflicts.
Barbie DeSoto, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Anne Allen, no conflicts.
And I'm Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by me, the chair. Please wait to speak until you're called upon by the chair. When speaking, please sure to speak into the microphone so that the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. And if you need to have a side conversation, you may step out of the quarters. Or the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over people. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping or cheering during the meeting. We will start with item number one on our agenda. ALM and associate request a zone change from residential conservation RC to low density residential LDR in order to build a three unit residential development located at 895 West 2000 North, Carterville neighborhood. Aaron Ardmore will present this item. Thank you.
And if you could also read an item two.
Okay. And we'll include in that also item two, which is ALM and associates request concept plan approval for a three unit town home development in the proposed LDR zone located at 895 West 2000 North, Carterville neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. All right, so here is the property up here on North Carterville. You can see State Street to the west on the area map. The zoning map just gives you some context of what's around there. So the majority of the area around this property is RC residential conservation zone with the commercial, general commercial zone to the south. The general plan for this property is residential. The proposal, so there's a picture of the property. If you haven't gone by, that's what it looks like. It's one of the the deep lots that are pretty popular around Provo. So this deep lot has currently one single family home. The request to change the zone from RC to LDR, the low density residential zone, is to be able to make use of the back portion of this property by providing additional housing units. Another thing to note, I think on this area where we can see a little closer is the number of two family dwellings and a number of duplexes just within a 500 foot radius of this. There's probably about thirty two family dwellings and about half of that for single family dwellings. So, so this is already not your typical single family neighborhood. The request, zooming in on that, shows a single family home fronting the street 2000 north with an attached unit behind it. And then a third detached unit further back on the lot. You'll notice that all of those have double car garages, accessed off the private access lane. And then there's open space between units two and three and then again behind the guest parking area. So these are the concept plans. These are some concept elevations, kind of an idea of of what the developer would like to move forward if the city council approves the rezone request. I think the staff recommendation to approve this or to recommend approval it comes by way of the general plan goals. I think this helps us to meet a lot of the goals with providing additional housing, providing a mix of housing and finding good spots for infill, small infill residential development. Those are all goals of the general plan and this rezone request meets those goals. We did have, you received some public feedback by email earlier this week. I'm just going to quickly summarize those for, for the public here. There's one from Sarah AC noting concerns about this not going to neighborhood meeting, which we know now is not a requirement on these rezone requests. There's also some concerns from her about the street being up the sport, this development. Engineering took this through staff review. They felt comfortable with moving forward. So there's no really, not really a concern there. There's another, the other email was from Marla Waite, who supports the rezone request noting that it's a, it's a small infill development and there shouldn't be too much adverse impact. I'm not sure if they're here tonight and they can speak more on those, but that's all I have for my presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, the applicant, sorry, the applicant and owner are also here.
Are here. Yeah, okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Ardmore? Okay, Commissioner Jensen.
The zone map and the staff report on page seven shows that the area, the cul-de-sac directly behind this property is zoned commercial. Is that a mistake?
No. No, so those are non-conforming two family homes in a commercial zone.
Okay, so even though it's a cul-de-sac, those are all duplexes there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. It looks like on the map we have, we're seeing four guest parking spaces. Is that correct?
Yes, on the concept plan, there's four additional spaces. So that's, that's one more than the code requirement and they just felt that that was necessary for the use.
Cool. Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that.
Any other questions? Okay, one more, Commissioner Jensen.
I'm sorry. The, the comments that we received said that one parcel shouldn't be rezoned unless all parcels on the street could be rezoned. Would the street and utilities support the whole street being rezoned LDR?
Yeah, I can address that. So any of the property owners on the street could request their own rezone. They can get together and request one large rezone. That reason would go through a staff review like this one did. And Public Works, Fire, Planning would all review that and note what, if there's any onsite or offsite improvements that would be required to facilitate that. And that would be part of that review before we could take it to, to you as planning.
And we've talked about this before when we rezoned properties from residential commercial zone or residential conservation zone to something else, that it's not actually spot zoning because the RC zone is to just preserve it as a residential use until something else comes forward.
Right, there's that. Yeah, they're all, they're all in the RC zone. The general plan for all of them is residential. So it would be appropriate for any of them to ask for a low density residential zone.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ardmore. Before moving to the applicant, I see there's people standing in the back. If there's an open seat next to you, would you just raise your hand so that folks could come and find seats if they'd like to? Thank you. If people would like. Also, you're welcome to stand. Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and present. You'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Following your presentation, if we have questions, we'll invite you to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mark Greenwood with ALM Engineering. I'm representing the owners who are here as well. Aaron's done a great job in, in presenting this. We've actually been working on this for some time. We've had, we've had numerous different plans that we've attempted to go through to try to guess. I think the first one, we had, had six units on it. The neighborhood at that point didn't like it, thought it was too many. So we'd tried to reduce it. I actually started developing down here or helping some developers down here work with some property to the west that, that didn't end up going through and, and they just had some struggles. And so after going through seven or six or seven different layouts and plans, we just decided let's just focus on this, this property. We're trying to kind of follow the general plan goals and, and create some residential spaces in these infill lots. It's difficult as, as towns grow and, and and get into these type developments, you're left over with, with properties that are hard to use or hard to develop and and it's a little bit of a challenge. We think we've been working with the city. We think we found something that, that is reasonable and, and can, and can fill the goals of the city. And as far as any technical issues, I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Can you remind me your name?
Mark Greenwood.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Does anyone have any questions for Mark? All right, appreciate it, Mark. Commissioners, would we like any discussion before we move to public comment or we could move to public comment? All right. We will now open the hearing to public comments. If there are any neighborhood district chairs present, you will have three minutes to comment. The general public will have two minutes to comment. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. If the commission has questions, we can invite you to come forward after your comment. And yeah, thank you, Commissioner Jensen. And I'll just clarify this, comments are only for the current item and we'll have open public comments for other items. She'll turn it on for you. It should work for you. Nope, let's try that one.
Can you hear me?
Yes, amazing. Please state your name.
Yes, I am the district representative for Carterville. So my name is Sarah and I've served as neighborhood chair for Carterville for the past eight years and the neighborhood district chair for the last year. I've had a lot of involvement in the neighborhood as it's grown and, but I am speaking for myself and my institutional memory of the neighborhood. My neighbors, some of disagree and that's okay. I am not anti-builder and I do appreciate this project meets the neighborhood's character very much and I appreciate so much the work that they have done to make this fit. So thank you. I am not anti-builder and Anana NIMBY. In fact, this is next door to me. My property is right to the west. This neighborhood has been locked in the oppressive R2 zone since 2002 and this area is in need of redevelopment very badly. But the problem is, is that the ability, inability for most citizens to navigate the complicated rezone process has left us with a street full of dilapidated rentals and homeowners who cannot upgrade their investments. And as Aaron mentioned, we can go as a group to upgrade, but the problem is, is we, if we try and upgrade again, the city utilities will say, well, we've got to do this to the street and then that burden falls on, the, the cost falls on the citizens. So that is why this has not happened before. There's nothing special about this lot that's different from any of the neighbors and I believe you would be doing this, the city and the neighborhood a disservice if you require every, I know it's not spot zoning, but if you require every single person on the street, if they wish to develop, to come through this entire, this process themselves. Especially if it results in the, in the builder having to upgrade the utilities because we've matched the threshold on the street. The applicant, the application also did not come out while it did apply, did have the 10 day noticing on the site. In reality, the change was, the notice was not in, in time for any of us to know. We all, we came aware of this on this weekend. We did not have time to put in grandma request to see the project and this is the first time any of us are seeing anything on this plan. For this reason, if you're considering this plan at all, I do strongly request that the plan is delayed for a future planning commission meeting. So the neighbors have time to properly review and research and understand the proposed development and its impact on the neighborhood. Again, I really appreciate that the developers have taken our past concerns and have built a plan that looks like it would, would accommodate. As many of my neighbors will express, so you're welcome to, the, the other projects have developed in our neighborhood that have been told that they could not develop because utility restrictions. I have talked to Public Works. I went as a neighborhood district. My entire district did a field trip to Public Works to understand the situation on our street and and I asked that you please look at the overall development of this area before you allow this one project just to slip through. Please look at the entire picture. I also request that if you do approve this project, please require the project to switch places that driveway puts six, six cars, eight cars, 10 cars within 12 feet of all of our bedroom windows. Switching it would put the driveway against the non-windowed walls of the duplexes on the other side. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Please come forward and state your name and where you live for the record. Thank you. It's the one that works.
Yeah. My name's Devin AC. I live almost directly across the street, in a little kitty corner. I, I do appreciate the, the effort that's gone into making it a beautiful and fitting development. I actually have a question and Sarah addressed one of them. That is, what's the impact on utilities? I assume that's part of the review process. It wasn't clear to me whether these are intended as rentals or as, as sales to private families. And also I also have concerns about the number of cars, especially if it ends up being rental, the number of cars that will actually park there versus what's required. So what we don't, it's already a, a street without sidewalks and there's already lots of parking on the street. So like some assurances that we're not going to even have more cars parking in the street. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe someone else was wanting to come forward. You're welcome to come forward.
Hi, my name is Sherry Solberg and I live at 869 West. So I'm just two houses down from this development. And I also am pleased with the architecture. I do have concerns about utilities. And, and I, I'm pretty adamant about if we're going to rezone, let all of us please rezone. And let us, all of us look at utilities, water pressure, all of that, because we really have been, we've lived there for 40 years. In 2002, they took away our duplex zoning. And then we went to RC. And when we would go propose anything, our neighbors would go propose anything, what we would be told is unless, you know, there's an upgrade, unless there's, you know, like we need an upgrade on utilities and you and your neighbors will be responsible to pay for that. And in 2019, there was a business zoning that came in. I don't know if any of you were around for that. But it was Grandview Medical. They wanted to come over the hill and business zone right there and it was adamantly turned down. But then they really looked at the water, the, you know, the utilities, the water pressure, the sewer, which there's been problems really right in AC's house, you know, that area right there. And then they told us then there was a moratorium on zoning and we could not build. So I have to admit that I was really surprised when I saw the sign in their yard. I didn't know that we could even ask to. I thought we were still in that moratorium. We had no neighborhood meeting. I know that we don't have to. There was no discussion. We saw no plans. I would like some more time to, I would really like to be considered to rezone. I mean, it's, we're sitting on gold up there. I don't know if you've been there, but there's all these almost half acre lots that have just been locked in. And it seems like the city would like more homes or, so it's not like we're anti everything. We just really want you to consider to help all of us, not.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any other public comments? Thank you. Please state your name and where you live for the record.
Yeah, my name's Tony Walters and I live at 908 West 2000. So literally right across the street from there and I'm pretty new to the area. We just moved in in July. So but my concern is short and sweet is how are we going to manage traffic with potentially all of these more units being put in? And my wife and I, we've noticed the area is a friendly area with people that know a lot of people. Especially on Monday nights, we see that it fills up in the area. So we're concerned about traffic flow. And if you guys have looked into how putting these in is going to affect, you know, relatively quiet area. I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
I have a microphone short. I apologize. Seeing no further comments, we will now close public comments and have a discussion amongst the commission commissioners.
Should we have Aaron Ardmore come in maybe address some of those, give some comments on the utility situation? It might be helpful to have a little more background with those concerns that were raised.
Yeah.
So we understand too, like what's, what's changed now if that was not, not previously allowed?
Yeah, love to. Thank you. So there was never a moratorium. I just want to make that clear. There's, there was an official moratorium that, that's a legislative process that just wasn't gone through. There might've been hesitancy, discouragement, things like that, but, but no moratorium. So each rezone request gets reviewed.
So each rezone request gets reviewed and judged case by case, right? So our Public Works staff, David Day, is here, and he can give you even more detail. But they they reviewed this and essentially came to the conclusion that two more units on this property wouldn't cause strain on streets, water, sewer, stormwater, that could not be controlled through the development plan. So so hopefully that that helps satisfy some of those concerns. As in regards to wanting all of the properties on the street rezoned with this, that's not within the purview of this group nor the council. They have to, you and they have to review and recommend and approve or deny the request in front of you, not add to. So there's that, and did I miss any? I was trying to keep notes. Did I miss any questions?
Erin, if I can follow up. Yeah, Commissioner Hill has a follow-up question.
On the zoning, everything, it does seem to highlight kind of an interesting tension that one of the commenters mentioned, where at some point it will fill up the utility usage, right? And so is it just a kind of first come, first served? If you're the first one in, you don't have to pay for the upgrades. It's just the unlucky person that decides to try to create more density at the point when it's at its breaking point, or how does that work? And what's the best way from a city planning point of view?
I think I think a lot of that depends on the area, right? So, for example, on the west side, we're talking in pre-meeting about how there's lots of potential for development up there. But it's going to take that first big development to extend the sewer to the pump station. Once that's done, the rest get that advantage, and they still have costs associated, of course, with their connections, but not that big trunk line. I think you could make parallels to this, where if there's water sewer issues, if every one of these went to LDR, the first couple are actually bearing most of that cost, right? If they're having to improve or upsize the line in 2000 North, that cost has been done with the the first few that come in. So.
But it's not, it's not the first few, I guess. It's, you know, maybe five make it, and then suddenly the city says utilities are maxed out, so the sixth one now has to bear that cost. Is that correct?
There there could be that potential. I think a lot of what we try to do in the city, and David Day can can speak to this as well, is we model our infrastructure off the general plan. So if someone came in to 2000 North and talked about wanting to do a big apartment building, yeah, that would put a strain and a cost on the city. I think right here, where we're doing single-family homes, yes, two are attached. But but you, like I pointed out, there's a lot of duplexes on the street already. I think keeping to that density that's expected, that capacity is planned for by our Public Works Department.
I have another question. There was a comment about flipping the layout. Is that something that was considered?
I I think we're not at the right stage to to even have that discussion. This is a concept plan.
So it's more in the project plan.
Comes about.
Yeah, and just as a process note for folks, can you just explain what a concept plan is?
Yeah, so the concept plan is a kind of a tie into any rezone request to give the public bodies an idea of what that zone could bring. So the decision in front of us is essentially the zone change. The concept plan, though the PTI Commission has the ability to approve or deny the concept plan, approving the concept plan doesn't mean when you see the project plan a few months from now, it's going to match. Right? So so it just gives you an idea of what that zone could bring to the site.
Great, and this this feedback could be incorporated right by the developer as he's moving towards a project plan.
Of course.
Amazing. Thank you.
Also to point out, in this plan, the garage is on the left side, but in the landscape plan, it's on the right side, so.
I will note the landscape plan is a older, from an older set.
It just shows to me that it's not set in stone anyway.
Exactly.
Thank you. I will also note, just as another response to another public comment, that the units are for sale. That was in the staff report. Thank you. Do you have a question? Sorry, we'll keep you back up for one more question.
So I just want to be clear. If we vote to change the the zoning here, when you said, well, this is just a projected plan, it has three units on it, one duplex and one single detached, right? If we change a zone, then does that open up the possibility for having more houses here built when it doesn't need to match a plan? Like, could it just be two detached, single families? Or could it turn into a, I know the sixplex was rejected, but would that open this back up to the sixplex, or?
In most cases, I would say yes, there's that risk of going up to 12 units per acre, for example, in LDR. And this one, the reason that that sixplex didn't make it to this body is because it couldn't be serviced. It couldn't fit the design standards of the zone. It couldn't fit the parking.
So just by nature of the law.
By nature of the law, and the the zone standards and regulations, this is essentially what the, sorry, the maximum that the LDR can get you.
Okay, so it's going to be three, not more than three.
Right.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, how are we feeling?
I think this is good. I I'm really happy that the neighborhood wants to do this as well, and I hope that there is a way that you can do that. Like Mr. Ardmore said, we aren't, we aren't the ones to decide based on that. But I really like this project, and I would love to see this in many more places in Provo, because this is exactly what we need, single-family, slightly, just slightly more dense, that slow moving to the next density level is wonderful.
Commissioner, is off?
Yeah, I'd be curious to, I mean, it sounds like at least from the comments of a few citizens that there's others that are interested in doing the same to their property. And I'd be curious what if Public Works would ever want to just chime in, not not now, but or maybe the citizens have the duty to approach Public Works and say, what are the the limits to, what are the outer limits of what that street can handle in terms of adding on additional capacity and and units and people and and property where it's still safe and still meets the sewer things? Because this one qualifies, you know, if three other properties did that, would it still, could it still handle it? If 10 other properties did that, like, would it be too much? Like, what's the
Right.
The limit of that?
Commissioner Jensen?
I feel like Mr. Ardmore was kind of answering that, unless I misunderstood. He said that the this zone request is in line with the general plan density. And so if there was.
Basically, LDR could happen.
Yeah.
Because that's what the general plan says.
Unless it was, the city would have to foot the bill because the general plan matches it. But I felt like you were saying the street could sustain that, this similar density through all the properties.
Yeah, and and where it can't, typically with development, we see people bond for improvements through the street, through their own connections, and sometimes off-site.
So does that mean they would have to foot the full bill of the upgrades, or they would pay just their contribution to it?
From, yeah, only what their increased demand serves.
Okay. I feel like most of the issues that were raised and questions that we've had are in regards to future development. But as far as this development, I like that the developer reduced the density, that the look of it, it looks like it's a single-family neighborhood. And I feel like if it's for sale units, it will add to the neighborhood instead of detract. So I would, I have no problems with the plan that we are voting on.
Commissioner South?
I I agree, and I appreciate Commissioner DeSoto bringing up the notion that these are the kinds of things that I think we're actively trying to encourage in Provo, and this fits really well. Just looking at the, this isn't official numbers, of course, but the 35 or so lots that front West 20, or West 2000 North, there's only about five that are of this size or larger. So even if there was a lot of interest in doing this, the existing structures and the size of the lots wouldn't permit widespread, you know, replication of this. So I think taking it one, one at a time, like, is the process that Ms. Ardmore brought up, I think, is, makes us work. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen?
There was one question that was brought up about whether the units would be for sale or if they would be for rent, and I don't know if we.
They're for sale.
For sure.
Yeah, that's what, at least that's what's stated by the builder in the staff report.
And that would mean that if, even if they were sold and then eventually rented, theoretically, you could only have three, not three cars, but three related, unrelated adults hopefully maxing out on three cars, and there is enough parking for that.
You're going to say something?
I was just going to say the same thing. I just want the neighborhood to know, you know, that's not a guarantee. Somebody can buy the house and then decide to rent it out. There's nothing we can do about that that's within their rights. I just don't want them to feel if there's a bait and switch if that happens.
Are we ready to vote? Anyone want to put forth a motion? Let's do item number one and two separately.
I'll make a motion. I move that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number one, ALM and Associates request a zone change from residential conservation to low-density residential in order to build a three-unit residential development located at 895 West 2000 North in the Cardville neighborhood.
Are there any seconds on the motion? Second, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, we'll vote, commissioners.
I.
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 Although I, the motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion for number, item number two?
I'd be happy to do that one also.
Thank you.
I move that we approve this concept plan. Item number two, ALM and Associates request concept plan approval for a three-unit townhome development in a proposed LDR zone located at 895 West 2000 North, Cardville neighborhood.
Is there a second on the motion?
All second.
Amazing. Any discussion on the motion? All right, let's vote. Commissioner Shin? I.
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 And although I, item number two passes unanimously. We will now move to item number three. Chase Fairbain requests a zone map amendment from the M1 Light Manufacturing Zone to the MDR Median Density Residential Zone in order to construct and sell 31 townhome units located on 1122 South 900 East Spring Creek Neighborhood. Dustin Wright will present this item.
And item number four, you can read that.
Okay, should have done that. Also, item number four, Chase Fairbain requests concept plan approval to construct and sell 31 townhome units in a proposed MDR Median Density Residential Zone located at 1122 South 900 East Spring Creek Neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so the applicant is looking to develop this manufacturing site here that's highlighted in red. It's currently, or what they're looking to do is change the manufacturing use to residential. So they're planning to build 32 residential townhome units, which is different than the 31 that was in that original noticing language. Here's the current zoning map on the left, shows that the property is in the light manufacturing M1 zone, and they're proposing to change that to the Medium Density Residential MDR zone. And our future land use map on the right calls for LDR in that area. This is the site plan that shows how they're proposing to redevelop the site to those residential townhomes. So there'd be 32 units, they'd be three-story townhomes with two with three bedrooms. Each unit will have a two-car garage, and there'll be nine visitor parking spaces. So there'll be a total of 73 parking stalls, 72 are the required, so there'd be one extra stall. And then this is the conceptual landscape plan that they've provided. It shows the open area for the landscape amenity for for the site. So barbecue picnic gathering areas in the center there. And then this is the floor plans showing the three levels of each unit. The main level would be the garage, the two-car garage, and then the main, second story would be the main living area, kitchen, family room, and then the third level would be where the three-bedroom units are located. Here's some conceptual renderings of the developments that they're being, that they're proposing. And then here's some images of the existing site, the manufacturing site, and then across the street to the east is a similar townhome project, as well as to the north is townhome units as well. So the developer, along with this rezone request, is also offering a development agreement. And so the the figures in the staff report have been updated since since they saw that they've added these changes here. So they're they're proposing to have it be deed restricted and to prohibit rentals for less than 12 months and permit no more than 35% of the units to be rented at a time, and that'd be in perpetuity. And it would also require that HOA is established, and the HOA would be charged with monitoring and controlling that no more than 35% of the units are rented at a time. And then also, the development agreement would limit the density of this development to 20 units per acre. The MDR zone that they're requesting allows up to 30, so they'd be reducing that, and this project would be 20 units per acre. So I think that's all I wanted to present on that. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to go over those.
Thank you. This is great. Any questions? Commissioner South?
There's quite a few changes since the staff report that we received. What's, I'm curious what staff's thoughts and recommendations are.
Yeah, our recommendation's still the same that's in the staff report. As far as, you know, a rezone on a property like this, we feel like, you know, it's not meeting that goal that the city has of owner occupancy. It has changed from 50% to 35% being rental, so that's a move in the right direction. But yeah, it's a, I guess, a question for the planning commission, city council ultimately to weigh in on.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Jensen?
What's the density for LDR? Maximum density?
12 units an acre. So 12 units for LDR. This is set 20, and then MDR's 30.
Okay. What's, I was, I was a bit surprised when I saw the MDR on the future land use map, because I was actually just in this area yesterday, and I think all the other townhome developments are more dense than MDR, right?
LDR.
LDR.
Well, isn't on the, if you go to the future land use map, sorry, LDR, that's what I meant. Okay, so it's basically, it's less than, they're asking for a zone that's less than the future land use map.
They're asking for MDR.
I'm saying less, more dense, okay, more dense, more dense.
LDR would be.
So but that's my, okay, so this is, this is my point then, which is the townhomes there seem to be MDR, basically, or are they actually at LDR?
I didn't calculate that. I should have done that. My guess would be that they're pretty comparable to what this project is.
That, I mean, that's what what I would guess just by being there recently. So that's why I'm confused why the the future land use map is saying LDR. Is there any reason for that, or?
I'm not 100% sure on all the reasonings for how that got
Okay.
established, but I think they looked at, you know, it's not single-family, and I think they're looking at MDR, you know, further down. But yeah, a lot of that property around there is already currently. You can see, yeah, townhomes all around, and then Mobile Home Park to the south.
Yeah, I mean, this concept plan looks at the, like, the same density, essentially, maybe even slightly less than what's in the area.
Yeah, I'd say it's pretty comparable to what's to the north and to the east there.
Cool. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is the, is the applicant here to present? All right, you'll have 15 minutes to present, at the which time, if we have any questions, we'll ask you them.
Awesome. My name's Levi Harper. Chase Freebran was taking over, or had started on this project, and I'm taking over it from him. We've been working on this. We did not get the staff recommendation. We had originally proposed a 50% owner occupancy and a 50% that could be allowed for rentals. That would be long-term rentals. Due to the fact that we did not get the staff recommendation, we've revised that since to that 65, 35% split. It's our understanding that the council's priority is to increase owner occupancy to 50% by 2029. And so by switching it to 65%, we're hoping to be able to help the city achieve that goal. And so that And so that was the, the notice for the change there. And other than that, we feel that we're within what, what would be required for that MDR medium density residential zone. Uh, it were, we're closer to the LDR if anything, and we think that it matches the area and that it would be a great development for the city. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions that pertain to the development. It's, uh, around fifteen hundred square feet. We have sufficient parking for this area as well. Uh, the question that we have from the developer owner side is what is that percentage of owner occupancy that we do need? Uh, we feel like we haven't been able to pinpoint that and obviously get the staff recommendation.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, I think you're good. We'll call you back up if we need anything. We will now open the hearing to public comments. Uh, if there are any neighborhood district chairs present, they will have three minutes to comment. The general public will have two. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding. Each person may make one comment, and if we have questions, we'll invite you back up to speak. I'll now open public comments.
Hello, um, my name is, uh, Tosh Metzger. I live here in Provo. Um, I live across the street east of this new development. And I'm for this development. This is awesome. This is what the neighborhood needs. It'll help our land values, our property values. Um, the only thing I would suggest is I'm, I'm kind of picky on this, but I like trees. And that development didn't show a lot of trees. My one thing is plant tons of trees, more trees would be really pretty, but I've talked to my, a lot of my neighbors knew too are for this. I think it's great. Um, my, it's awesome. It must make.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, seeing no further commenters, we will now close public comments and have a discussion among the commission. Commissioner Shin?
I think the, um, the offer that the developer proffered, um, talking about, you know, ensuring a certain amount of owner occupancy, uh, uh, not, not allowing short-term rentals, you know? I think that sounds like a pretty good offer. You know, there's not a lot of developers that I think will come to us with that proactive, you know, of, of trying to hit what we, what we want to see with our city goals. You know, I, I think it sounds pretty reasonable. I, I, it, it matches what's already there and um, I think it would be a benefit.
I have a question. Um, what is our, we've talked about our, our percentages of rentals overall and also the last, say, couple of years of things we've approved, what those percentages are? Do you happen to know roughly what those are bill?
It's sixty forty rentals to owner occupied units and for the last five to seven years, we've been approving about nine townhomes and, um, apartments, most of those being rentals to everyone, single family lot. The developer really did press staff on what's the right percentage and this is a pretty new issue that the planning commission and city council has been waiting through. So we just felt like there wasn't an established pattern or record that had been established to be able to tell him, well, this is what they, planning commission city council seem to want. So that's why it's kind of been pointed to you and the city council to make that determination.
Thank you. I, I actually also have a question. Uh, so we recently looked at the amenity scoring system that I think is still kind of making its way. Would this coming in?
It's one of our items.
Yes, oh yeah, actually, that's right. Yes, we'll see if we'll get to it, but, uh, um, so would this be applicable under that system or is it below, I, I can't remember the number of units that would trigger that scoring system?
Um, yes, if it wasn't pending legislation.
Yeah.
So this, this got in before that, but yeah, if this came in after, it would be subject to it.
That's what I thought. And so what my, my next question is, how would it perform relative to the standards set up in there? I know, I know it's not applicable, so I'm not going to be unfair in the judgment, but I'm curious.
That's something we can calculate and get to.
That'd be amazing. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Jensen?
Um, I just have some questions because I look at this map and go, I wouldn't want to own a piece of property right there. I wouldn't want to own a house there. And I know other people feel differently. But are we doing the wrong thing by encouraging owner occupancy in this industrial next to the railroad zone? Um, uh, so that's one, that's thing one.
The flip side of that though is it could be more affordable, right? Because other people may feel the same way.
And it's not, and this is the last piece nearby that's industrial, so it wouldn't be anymore.
Well, the trains, just the trains, yeah.
But, yeah, that's true.
There's, there's part of me that feels this, a lot of the surrounding properties are, um, owner occupied or, or at least
For sale.
For sale, right? They're not, um,
Management.
Like just in that neighborhood. I, I do know that a lot of those are townhomes and, and, uh, like, uh, Mr. Metzger said, they're um, for owner, yeah, owner for owner. Um, and my, my issue, I think, uh, when I think about the city objectives and stated goal of having a fifty percent owner occupied, um, what that means to, to me is that to get there new projects have to hit well above fifty percent, um, i- if not some substantial number more, um, and that i- if they just hit the fifty, like, oh, this project means fifty or this project means sixty-five, that's not that's not gonna get, that's not gonna help the city meet its goal of fifty percent owner occupied.
So like, in other words, we're in the hole in terms of our averages for owner occupancy?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I do think that part of the goal though is affordable homeownership, and I do think that this area might, might contribute more to the affordability side of the equation, right? And so uh, just thinking about some of the other, uh, projects that we've seen come before us in the last few months, um, looking back, I don't know if, uh, Sandy, you can go back to the the LDR map or the, the general plan proposed, yeah, future land use map there. If you look at that LD, that area that's colored as LDR, a big selection of those are, to your point, Commissioner Gonzalez, are owner occupied, single family dwellings. So we have a pretty interesting mix there. Um, I, I don't want to venture what the, the other townhomes are in terms of, um, right, right adjacent to the project, but in that whole area, we have quite a mix of different types of, uh, densities. And looking at this specific property, I think at eighteen point nine six units, it's in the LDR zone and they're looking for twenty. So given that this is, you know, uh, an isolated piece of property, it's in an area that mixes already. It's pretty darn close to what the future land use map is trying to get us to. It's likely to be affordable. I think there's a lot of positives for this particular development.
The, the quiet. The quiet zone is back in place, so that, that helps.
Although the quiet zone, if I'm not mistaken, ends at the front runner station. So the trains still sound as they go through there.
Right.
I. Am, am I mistaken about that?
I'm not sure about that, actually. I, I think.
I think that there's, there's a, the Union Pacific trains still sound in that area.
Isn't it only at crossings?
Yeah, there's been a significant reduction in sound from this area, but I'm not exactly sure the details of that. It's a good point. You gonna say something, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm also, I'm also comfortable, I, I'm not comfortable with an MDR. Um, I think the surrounding properties seem to be mostly at the LDR density, um, like, am, am I concerned about losing?
That was my argument earlier is I don't, I don't think that's correct. I think these are, I think the current things are
MDR.
MDR for sure. I was, the rea, the reason why I was in this area is I have a friend who just moved here from Ghana. We're trying to find housing close to where we live, so our friends can be friend, our kids can be friends. Um, and so I, I toured this area extensively. These are MDR. They're very similar density levels. I mean, he can, uh,
I'm, I'm, I kind of defer to like trust but verify. Like, I'd want to see data on that.
That's fair. Um, that was what I was asking earlier though.
But like, is, is losing, as far as like losing an M one next to the railroad tracks, like, is that, like, is that a concern? Um, yes, but on the same hand, I, for me, it's like a no because everything does north, everything in the south is LDR, MDR residential, so.
Did we get any information on that, Scott or Dustin? Where's Dustin?
I'm over here, sir.
Hi Dustin.
On.
On, on just like ru- roughly what the existing townhouse developments in the area, what they, if they would qualify for LDR, MDR?
Yeah, that's something I could, um, I'd have to go in and look at the numbers on those and get that for you.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, that you were agreeing with my assessment that they're most likely closer to their MDR?
Yeah, my, my guess would be that this, uh, development is pretty comparable to what is surrounding it as far as density goes. It is um, less than the thirty that the MDR calls for and you know, slightly above what the, you know, so it's just
LDR permits, it's between the two.
Yeah, so I would think that it's pretty comparable.
You said it was, uh, development agreement proffered also included a deed restriction to make it
Twenty units.
Twenty maximum. So it's less than
Yeah, that's, it's between the two.
Yeah.
Basically, it's slightly above the LDR.
It's, it's one over the LDR basically.
Yeah, one per, per acre? Or just one total unit? Okay, wow. That's good to know. Thank you.
I have a question about, um, buffering with the railroad. I know that when we have non, um, similar zones adjacent to each other, that there's additional requirements for setbacks or or different things to buffer the non-compatible uses. How does that apply here?
Uh, so being adjacent to residential, some of the zones allow for increased setbacks, so like the, um, ITOD zone, for example. Instead of having a, um, like a ten foot setback would allow them to have like a twenty foot setback. But it's not a requirement, that's just some flexibility in the code to be setback beyond what the
So they can have a subdivision that goes right up next to the railroad without any requirement. They don't have to meet any requirement. They can choose to meet a requirement.
Yeah, there's not a, a code requirement that pushes you further away, uh, from the railroad.
Is there a wall or anything there that, um, I just, I, I can't get over how like right on top of it it is. It's, and if you look at the, the surrounding map, it's the closest, it's closer than any of the other houses are, the way this is laid out.
Yeah, so it would probably be comparable in setback to the properties to the north and south from the railroad.
Yeah, they did put the road in between.
Yeah, I like that.
So.
Oh, sure. I, I used to live in Vineyard, you know? I, I lived in an apartment in Vineyard that was near the railroad about, about this distance, you know? In my experience, it was, it was, it was okay. We never had like issues with noise. I mean, maybe the quiet zone issue has been, they might have changed things over there, but I, you know, I, I don't feel strong that, I, I think it's, I, I don't think it's gonna be terribly disruptive, you know, from my personal experience. And, uh, you know, I think I would, I would probably rather live near a railroad like this than a lar, you know, loud, busy, you know, uh, interchange or a freeway, you know? I, I, I think it's, this is my own, you know, experience, but.
I don't think you've heard the Union Pacific trains in this part of the city at night.
It's possible, yeah.
No, that's fair. They're very loud.
They're very loud.
I'll give you that.
All night long.
Um, Commissioner Kendall, you wanted to say something?
I just think that the, um, the dated restrictions are great on this. I appreciate that the developers tried to come forward with some of this stuff, uh, and also mentioned that they're interested in knowing what the city feels as far as a good owner occupancy percentage is. And from what we've heard from the city, they'd like to know our opinions.
Right.
And the city council. So would it be appropriate for us to recommend a slightly increase, like maybe eighty percent? And would that pencil out?
Well, I have a question about how that's even enforced. We've talked about
Through the HOA is what would go with the dated restrictions. So I, I really think like what Andrew was saying, that this is a place where maybe we could actually get some affordable homeownership. Because it, so far, many of the projects we get are not
Yeah, they're very expensive homes, yeah.
And this would, because of its location, would allow it to be more affordable, I would think. So if this is our chance to try and increase home occupancy, um, I think we should put that out there. So what about eighty percent?
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, can we go to that, um, proffered agreement?
While you're doing that, uh, Commissioner Whitlock, I got answer on the amenity menu.
That'd be amazing.
So the proposal has all the scores, minimum sixty for any project. This from what I can see would score sixty-eight.
Great, great. I love it.
Um, what I really like about this is that it's an actual deed restriction, right? And so this prevents what we talked about earlier where someone could buy it and then rent it out themselves kind of thing. Um, it's interesting. I'd like to see the numbers. They say sixty-five, thirty-five. Um, Commissioner Kendall has suggested eighty percent. It's, it's so hard for me because I don't know the economics of it, right?
Exactly.
And something that we've talked about as a concern is that, yes, we want to drive more homeownership, but we also don't want to just end up stopping all development altogether because we just made it economically impossible to do, right? Um, I definitely think above fifty percent has to be a rule. If we want to hit fifty percent, we gotta be above it significantly. Roughly two-thirds seems pretty significantly above. Um, but I'd be curious what people think would be the appropriate amount. Is it eighty percent? What, what should it be?
I, my reaction to this was that it felt reasonable, maybe seventy, just I'm kind of swagging to your point. I, I feel a little comfortable totally swagging without more details, but um, to me, kind of eighty, twenty is a really big ask and, and, and I think that this is also an area to Commissioner Jensen's point where people will want to rent. The friend I mentioned earlier, we're trying to find a place for him to rent. He's not in a place where he can immediately buy a home and um, it's a great, it's a great location. The part, the reason, because it's next to the tracks, it is a little bit more affordable for a good sized house for his family. So I, I, I don't want to be totally anti-renter. There are very, we need renters in the city and, um, they contribute and, and so I would be hesitant to push it too far in this type of a development.
I just feel like it's, it's not fair for us to make a standard and make the newcomers fix the problem. And so that's why I, I'd be more inclined to say let's make it more than fifty, make them do their part, but maybe there's other economic development incentives that could encourage rentals to turn to ownership properties.
And I'm also a little hesitant saying this is the number, right?
Right.
I, I think we're saying like, this is the situation we're in, and we look at it on a case by case basis, and the economics will be different on different types of projects, but I mean, this seems uh, uh, I mean, to you know, to, to John's, uh, comment, this is, this is, this seemed significantly over fifty percent, so. No.
Commissioner?
Oh, sorry.
Thanks. Yeah, I think, I mean, my, my gut feeling is right now, like, if we pushed it farther to the point that it didn't pencil out, that we either lost this project or that we lost units, you know? I mean, for me, I think that's the limit that I would want to push it if we were going to ask them to up it. I, if it comes to the cost of losing any units or of you know, jeopardizing making the project, project actually pencil out, I, you know, I, I, I wouldn't want to push it past there, you know? And I think that the question about like you know, the, the, the question of owner occupancy versus, um, for sale units, uh, or for rent units, excuse me, is, is one that we've, you know, it, it's been discussed. It was recently discussed at the, the city council work session yesterday, um. I, I think it's something we're still trying to figure out how to nail down and think about the right way, you know? But I do think that it's worth considering that like I mean, every unit that we build here, even a for rent unit frees up a potential house in an existing neighborhood on the market that otherwise might turn into a rental, you know? So even by, by building more rental units in a place where, you know, where we're okay with them, we can, we can alleviate some of that rental demand and the pressure that's currently turning so many of our single family neighborhoods into uh, into short-term rental unit or rental areas, you know? And I think that's, I mean, you know, if, if we're if we're here to share our opinion, I, you know, I think that's something worth, worth taking into consideration that I, I'd rather you know, I would rather see us increase our, especially for this kind of a place, like, it's not, you know, it's not in the middle of an existing you know, low density residential neighborhood where I think a lot of the concern about renting is, is coming from, right? That people in the existing neighborhoods feel like their neighborhoods are being lost to renters, you know? And I would, I would put forward that I think that's kind of the underlying issue a lot of people are feeling when we talk about this issue is that like you know, my existing quiet neighborhood is being changed into this, this rental community, um, but that, you know, that, that could happen. That's not like necessarily a comment on the actual the hard number of what the ratio is, you know, it's, it's, you know, and, and part of the question is if we increase our housing stock altogether, we can increase both more renting units and for sale units in a way that can help these neighborhoods not have to experience that kind of change. Um, so I, you know, I, I would, I feel comfortable with sixty-five if, if that's what the developer is willing to proffer. I, my, my instinct is not to want to push them beyond that, but yeah.
Um, yeah, I was just looking at this and it's sixty-five percent equates to about twenty out of thirty-one, seventy is twenty-two out of thirty-one and eighty is twenty-four out of thirty-one, assuming I'm rounding down because you can't have eight tons or forfeits of a house. So, um, yeah, partially owned.
Yeah, I was actually curious if there's a legal standard on this. When you say, does it have to round up? For example, because you said, I'm gonna do sixty-five percent and that ends up being twenty point eight and you gotta do twenty-one because then you met the standard, twenty didn't.
I think that's something for city council to have to work out.
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen?
I'm sorry, you're I just wanted to add, yeah, I think, you know, I just wanted to add, yeah, I think, you know, if I was in a situation, just generally speaking, where I was at forty percent of something and I wanted to get to fifty percent and I said, hey, everything I do, I'm doing at two-thirds, that seems like a good kind of progress towards the goal without being too extreme and too drastic, right? Um sixty-seven, actually, if we do rounding rounds back to twenty-one as well, so it doesn't change anything. We're within rounding error of it. Um and so I think, I think this is a good kind of middle ground where it's sitting right now.
Commissioner Allen?
Just wondering if this is a question maybe we ought to address later because we need a lot more data. I don't know what the housing uh I don't know what the inventory looks like for rentals. Seems like there's plenty of rentals in Provo, just not a lot of places to live because they're full. Or what the inventory is for sales. Do you know what I'm saying? Like that we're making a lot of guessing right now and then saying, oh, we're gonna do this percentage and I'm like, whoa, 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 let's get some numbers first.
Commissioner, I'd like one other comment. Um as far as the time period of prohibiting rentals less than twelve months, in in my conversations with, I think it was Utah League of City of Towns, um their recommendation was something like three to five years. He said five years. Oh. Um the reason being, it's easy to sit on a property for twelve months and you let it go unoccupied and then just skip it to a rental. Um so I don't.
But I I don't think that's what this is saying though, right? This is saying the minimal lease period is twelve months and the H O A deed will require that you, at all times, you cannot have more than thirty-five percent for rent.
Yes, it's okay. That that's trying to get rid of.
Can you clarify that? Did I understand that correctly? Okay.
So it should be written more like prohibit lease terms less than twelve months.
Okay, I I see what you're saying there.
That that clear uh address your question or concern? Come back.
Yeah.
So you're saying it should say, y- you can't. After purchase.
Yes, in a, in addition to um what's there. Uh a lot of the times what i- i- if the objective is truly to increase owner occupancy, then a a a longer time period of um not allowing uh homes to be sold uh for, you know, short, after one year, after two years.
It doesn't seem to address that at all.
No.
Like, I don't see, if if this means no short-term rentals, then there's nothing in here that says. I think it's actually saying forever. That's what Dustin said, right? That in perpetuity, like the H O A is gonna make it that way.
No.
But you're saying there could, if we wanted to even push it further, there's another thing where you could say the minimum holding period is three years, and then that wouldn't discourage the thirty-five percent of owners for to buying one and flipping them, basically.
Right.
Is that what you're saying essentially, Commissioner?
I don't know if that's in our purview, though, right?
It's not, but I, our purview is to encourage. Uh I I think we have directive to encourage owner occupancy, so uh and those are just my feeling, like based on that, I would be uh like based on what's before us, I would be voting no on both of uh item number three and item number four.
I also would just like to point out that um when we've had new developments come before us in the last couple of years, we Southeast Provo has had a lot of apartments and townhomes be approved and built, and the neighborhood has said, we don't want more rental units. Um now, I think when they say we don't want more rental units, they mean we don't want multifamily. I don't actually think they're differentiating between owner and rental in many of those cases.
Talking about apartments is what you're saying?
Yeah, and so does this fall into that or is this because it's attached single-family? Does it, does it meet what they're asking for? Are we, are we listening to the neighborhood or are we putting more trend, lot of turnover burden on another, an already burdened neighborhood? Because you look at everything between the railroad tracks and State Street, except for those few single-family homes that are sprinkled into the north of here, is is now townhomes and apartments, and they're all relatively new.
Um, great thoughts. In the spirit of moving this along, I'm kind of, can we do a quick straw poll and just kind of see where we're at? How are we, how are we feeling?
Yeah, if I can comment on that real quick, I actually agree with Ann that I think what we need to do is kind of make our gut decision on this one, saying, is it enough? Is it not as far as owner occupancy? And then maybe for a study session, future discussions, we can start looking at what is the inventory, what are things? And try to get at least a rule-of thumb number um or factors to consider, something that we can use in future to inform developers ahead of time, because this is the second time now in just a few months that we've been asked, well, what is the right number, right? And I think it's gonna come up over and over again.
I I have a comment, too. I agree with that. And I I think that um, no, I completely forgot. Oh, I was gonna say uh just for the thought experiment or asking also people what they think, would it be better to have something like the three-year restriction on turning around and renting an up um instead of the thirty-five percent or a percentage? Does that make sense? Like, does that seem like it would be more effective than the percentage?
The most effective person. I I do agree with Commissioner Gonzalez that um I think that's added protection, but I, this is quite, if it's implemented the way I imagine it's going to be, where it's actually in the C C N Rs of the H O A, that it's going to be quite effective.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if it, if it comes down to having a hard cap on the, on the ratio here, like X number of units have to be owner occupied. I mean, I I don't, I don't see that we need, you know, the the whole, th- these are two mechanisms for accomplishing the same kind of thing, limiting the amount of of rental units. And I I think this is, I don't think this would need both of those, you know? I think this would be effective on its own for that goal.
Shall we do our straw poll?
Yeah, well, how are we feeling?
Can I ask first, would it be better to then deny this or to postpone? What's better for the city and for the applicant? If we decide that we need more time, we need, we want to discuss this better, we want to come up with a better number to recommend.
Continuation is more appropriate.
Continuation is better.
I mean, I personally would be against the continuation just because I feel this is a uh very unseemly piece of property. We have a great project proposal in front of us. They're proffering more than I think we've been seen proffered from ma- many developers, and I would hate to punish the developer, making them wait another.
Yeah, I feel like the continuation addresses um something we need to talk about for the future, but it's not fair to put it on them. We need to make a decision. And I feel badly because it sounds like we're kind of leaning towards making a decision that's contrary to what the staff is recommending, but I feel like we're all kind of enticed by these, this development agreement.
Is is it appropriate to ask the developer how he feels about postponement? Is that okay? Can you come up and address that? And because you had mentioned that you'd like to know what what number does the city feel is appropriate for owner occupancy, which led me to think that maybe you could squeeze a little more into this.
The the question with the percentage was more related to the fact that more owner occupancy would limit the sales and we, we feel that that's risky for penciling for us. We had originally been at fifty-fifty, trying to meet that goal of fifty percent, but then we see that we need to increase it due to a lack of owner occupancy in the city, and that's why we went up to sixty-five. That is becoming tough for us to make this pencil and make this make sense. Um, we did provide um to Dustin, but it was short um notice yesterday, I I believe, with the development agreement. So some of these bullet points could be fleshed out more than they are in the development agreement itself, but the H O A will will limit that. It is thirty-five percent in perpetuity, and there is no necessary time period. Uh the only time period that we're sitting on there with the twelve months is that you can't have a lease, like a short-term rental or an Airbnb. Um, we do close or or we're expected to close on the property with the property owner on February third. We would prefer, obviously, for the, for the sake of time, to continue moving this forward, but it's obviously up to you guys.
Okay, that that's very.
Thank you. That's a good question. I actually have a question uh for Dustin real fast, and um I think you kind of already said this, but I just want to make sure I'm not making assumptions. So the staff report says that uh sort of recommend denial because of those, against the zone change, and then when you read the other one, it's because uh the the zone change is not helping the city's goal for ownership. With this increased proffer, is there any, is that still the official sort of staff report or is there any change there?
Yeah, it would still be the kind of same thing. We wanted to really bring it before planning commission and city council to to kind of weigh in on that, because, yeah, those numbers aren't something we've gotten a set number direct to direction from to move forward with, so.
But to clarify this staff position.
Yeah, I wanna.
Appropriate use for this piece of property. Look at the surrounding uses. This is an appropriate request. So staff is supportive in that regard. Why we were current, couldn't go to the point of saying we recommend approval is simply over the center occupancy issue.
Okay.
We feel like the developer has proffered more than we've ever heard from a developer before, and that should be considered.
Okay.
Have you, have you given any direction or guidance to the, to the developer on what percentage you would meet approval?
No, we specifically didn't. He asked us that question over and over again, and we specifically didn't because that this isn't an issue to the staff as much as it is the goal of the city council, wanting to increase that owner occupancy. And it's, we need the city council to establish those parameters for us.
So I think, you know, sending this forward at least and not continuing does a couple of things. One, it helps with timelines. It helps a a good development keep going, but also it gives an opportunity for the city council to weigh in. Um and I think that's important because I want to know what their thinking is. That's a directive that they've come up with.
Well, I also feel like we've discussed the numbers a lot in in deciding what our vote will be, and so that will go forward with that will go forward as feedback to them of what we feel is a fair burden for a developer to have to absorb.
Yep. Um, I want to move to a motion, but I actually think it'd be really helpful just for educating us. When you say it won't pens, can you come up and just explain to us like why economically it's helpful to have a certain percentage to rent to make the project one worth pursuing?
W- we just feel that it could be restrictive and risky on our, on our terms, because then you're only, you're you're narrowing your buyer pool, right, to only owner occupied? And then that's taking out, you know, someone like a a father, grandfather that's looking to buy this for uh their kids to live in. It's taking out somebody that wants to live there for one year, two years, and then they'd want to rent it out to a couple that's going to B Y U, for example. And so we're just trying not to limit our buyer pool to only owner occupied.
Got it. So what you're saying is there's a certain population of buyers who are going to say, I want to buy this house and own it and live in it. Uh and then sell it when I'm done with it.
Correct. Uh we just want to keep it open somewhat. We understand and we want to align with your guys' goals, but at the same time, if I was going to buy a property and there was multiple restrictions and there was never a possibility that I could ever rent it, uh I would, I would pause or or be hesitant with that a little bit, that it was restrictive and I couldn't, if I wanted to in five years, rent this out or something like that.
Thank you for, uh, you have one more question.
Can I just add? So if I'm understanding it right, the developer plan is to sell all the units. You just want to make sure that you can sell it to people who are interested.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, we will sell all the units.
That's a good clarification.
It's just that the buyers should be able to have the potential, as long as it's within that thirty-five percent, to potentially rent it out in the future.
Thank you so much. All right, let's go ahead and can we have a motion and see where we're landing?
I'll make a motion.
Perfect.
Um, I move that we recommend approval for item number three, a zone map amendment for the M one light manufacturing zone of the M D R uh medium-density residential zone to construct and sell thirty-one townhome units located at eleven twenty-two South, nine hundred East.
Let's go.
Um but this would be s- and and attached to that, subject to the development agreement that has been proffered. And someone help me, is there anything else we need to do to that?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yeah. Okay, thank you. Thirty-two units.
Yeah, do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh any discussion on the motion? All right, no discussion. Let's vote Commissioner Shin.
I.
I.
Nay.
Nay.
I.
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 And I'll vote I, that's.
I would.
Seven to two.
I would like to say why I'm saying nay, because I just have limited faith in an H O A to stay together long enough to continue keeping these promises. So it's more about the ability to enforce the development agreement in perpetuity, but I'm okay with the development.
So on that point, again, this is an issue we're still trying to work our way through, but I agree that the city's gonna have to come up with a mechanism more firm, more reliable than H O A C C N Rs.
Right.
Those are too easily amended. So there's gonna be some kind of deed restriction, which the developer has proffered. There's gonna be some kind of deed restriction or something that goes beyond just.
Because it's a beautiful thing on paper, but I just don't, I don't have a lot of faith that it's realistic.
Right.
And and then my nay is just based on uh the percentage of owner occupancy, along with uh other issues I brought up that could be en- en- enhance the protecting owner occupancy.
Thank you. Uh that item, item number three passes seven to two. Does anyone have a motion for item number four, the concept plan?
I'll make a motion again.
Thank you.
Um. I recommend that we approve the concept plan for item number four uh to construct and sell thirty-two townhome units in the proposed M D R zone. Uh, subject again to the development, uh uh reaching the development agreement, terms of your development agreement.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh any discussion on the motion? All right, Commissioner Shin.
I.
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 Although I, item number four passes unanimously. All right, um, this might be the one that some people are interested in. Item number five, David Peterson requests project plan approval for a new one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-unit apartment project in the I Todd uh zone located at one fifty-six West, five hundred South. Uh Dustin Wright will present this item.
Thank you. So this is the property that the owner is looking to uh redevelop the site. Uh the property is currently located in the I T O D, the interim transit-oriented devan- developmental zone. Um. The property that they're proposing to develop would be apartments, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine units. Um, it currently are three parcels of land that the site uh would be developed on, so a final plat will will be needed to combine uh those parcels into one, and that's currently underway. Uh, the property uh covers the majority of the site. Um, so a lot of coverage in the I T O D zone. There's not a limit, so that is compliant. Um, it's located within the downtown street skate standards area. So if you can see on the five hundred South Street, uh the project would comply with those. It meets the street furniture requirements and the amenity uh area there. They're providing on-street parking, angle parking as well. Um, and then also in the back area with the concept plan, they had a requirement to put a ped amenity uh space, which they're complying with that as well, a twelve, twelve-hundred-square-foot area there as well. Um. And then here's the elevations of the project, so it's uh seven stories above grade and one below grade. Uh, the height is eighty-four feet. Uh, the zone allows for a hundred, so it's uh within those parameters. And then here's the floor plan, so the, the level below grade would be for parking. And then the level at grade is gonna have uh some amenities and office space and parking behind, and then access parking from five hundred um, south. And then the next floor up would be another level of parking, and then above that's gonna be the residential units and the amenity space. So those amenities include uh clubhouse, um game courts, fitness centers, uh shared decks, rooftop terrace, E V parking, patio lounge, bike repair workshop. So they're meeting that ten percent uh amenity space requirement. And so there's one-hundred-and-nineteen one-bedroom units and ten two-bedroom units in this project. And then here are some uh photos of this existing site uh with the commercial uh and some vacant uh land as well. And so that's the project that's being uh proposed by the property owner to to redevelop this site. Um, and I'd be happy answering questions that you might have.
Uh, does anyone have any questions for Dustin, Mr. Wright?
Um, so what is going to, is this just entrances, like lobby entrances that are on the five hundred South side? Or offices?
Yeah, so on five hundred South, yeah, there'd be um entrances into, you can see there's like the fitness center, um office space, mailroom, those type of things, and then over on the right-hand side is where the entrance to the parking garage would be.
I have a question regarding the I T O D zone. Um, uh, reading about this zone, is this, is this? uh, reading about this zone, is this, is this one of our zones that does allow for, it would allow for mixed use in the same building? Is that a permitted use in the I T O D zone, like commercial and residential in the same building?
Correct. Yeah, the I T O Z, I T O D zone does allow that, but doesn't require it.
Yeah.
But it does require a certain amount of residential, if it is a mixed use project.
But that's not in this concept plan. It's purely residential.
It is project plan. Yeah, it's residential and it has amenity space.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Wright?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Sorry, I'm a little late to jump in. Uh, on the northeast corner of that block, there's uh, like four or five single family homes. Did we have a plan come before us one time for those homes to be demolished and and redeveloped? This is like across from the four hundred element. On on one hundred south or one hundred west and four hundred east south.
Yeah. So there are two different uh, projects, uh, one to the north. Oh, sorry, not two. There's, yeah, one to the north um, and east that would take those homes right there, all the way down to that home there, except for the corner lot is not part of that development. So that corner lot will stay a vacant space for some future opportunity there.
Can you remind us what that um, project is? Do you remember?
Um.
Maybe we could help you pull it up and.
Yeah.
Might have a.
Fairbanks Apartments.
He's our encyclopedia of active projects. He's fantastic at that.
I have a question. Are you done with yours, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah. Well, just what, how many units were in that proposed Fairbanks development?
I was on my way to look that up.
When you get it, you just chime in.
Um, it, the findings of fact on page two of the staff report say that this project is for family occupancy, not batching singles. Um, so my first question is, how is that enforced or guaranteed? And then the second one is in number six, it says, it's talking about the parking, but is the parking requirement for family occupancy different than for batching singles or is it the same? Is there a different standard for parking?
Yeah, there would be um, a different parking standard uh, for that batching single. Um, but for single family, yeah, that's essentially as far as um, you know, code enforcement would get involved if there was uh, if they were not using the property to what its uh, legal occupancy is. Um, so there would be code enforcement if they were using it as batching instead of single.
So that does, how is that recorded and and made public? Cause you can buy a place and not real, not realize it, because somebody doesn't give you the information. So how, how does a buyer know that it's it's family occupancy and not batching singles and therefore maintains that?
Yeah. So this would be an apartment uh, building that would be, I believe, under single ownership. They're not condominiumizing and selling out individual units. So
Okay.
Someone wouldn't be able to buy it and do that. So the property owner, when they lease those out, they'd have to make sure that they're complying with the family occupancy.
So it doesn't even require a development agreement? They just have to rent to the people they say they're going to rent to?
Correct.
Okay. And to clarify, like Mr. Soto said, if it's family occupancy, that also can mean three unrelated rumors or borders. It's just not meant to have two stacked per bedroom available, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright?
What, what is the parking difference between batch singles and the family requirement?
Um, the batching, I don't off the top of my head, but it's based off of the number of bedrooms. So it's um, spaces uh, or sorry, per bed. Um, so it's I don't off the top of my head what the batching parking requirement is. Sorry. It'd be air in my looking it up.
Um, before I get to that, the Fairbanks is a hundred and nine units. Yes.
Commissioner Hill? I was just gonna add, how many stories tall is the Fairbanks one? Do we know?
It's very similar to the four hundred element right across the street to the west. That's a hundred and eight units, if I remember correctly. And that's a four story building, if I remember right.
Great.
It's actually the same builder and developer during those two buildings.
Did you mean to the east?
To the east, I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, is the applicant present? Good present? Perfect. Uh, if you could come up and you'll have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. And then we will ask you questions following your presentation.
Good, good evening. I'm Mike Morley. This is Brett Harris. He's our architect. A couple of years ago, when we looked at the property and looked at the area, our, our intent was to try and bring some affordable housing to Provo. There hadn't been any in a long time and uh, market rate had become pretty difficult for a lot of people. So our intention was to find something that the state was really pushing for at the time and still pushing for, but to put some affordable projects down near the uh, front runner stations in order to give some good accessibility to people who need uh, housing at an affordable rate and provide some, some good opportunity for people to uh, to work and live in the same community. And Provo has become quite expensive, as most of you probably know. As we looked around, we found this particular project and did some due diligence. We looked at uh, the the properties that were currently on the site. And uh, there were some issues with uh, environment or environmental issues. There were some, some real structural issues. And uh, as we visited with law enforcement, there were a lot of uh, calls down to this area. It was a kind of a blighted area and we felt like that uh, this would be an ideal area where it's directly across from the uh, front runner station and is in a kind of up and coming area to be able to provide some good housing, some good traffic, uh, or at least the mitigation of traffic. And to provide a, a very nice uh, apartment building that would provide good housing for people. So we hired Harris Architects and we believe we've gone through and met all of the zoning and other requirements there. I'll let Brett talk to that.
Yeah. Um, as we, as we designed the project, we, we had, we came in for a zone change because there was two parcels that were in the D T one zone. And so we moved it all into the I T O D zone and then and got concept plan approval for that, uh, after that. And then now obviously we're seeking the final uh, project plan approval. Um, we feel that we've, we've uh, met the uh, the requirements of the I T O D zone, uh, zoning requirements and the ordinances that there there are with the uh, uh, with that uh, parcel. And then also the any staff recommendations and and C R C uh, uh, recommendations from the report. We've uh, we've been able to work through any of the issues that that were foreseen there and feel like uh, as Mike said, that, you know, this is very well suited for the area with the apartment buildings that are, that are there and plan to be there. And then also uh, with it being in the proximity to to mass transit. So.
Just as a follow up, we have um, received approval from the state for uh, tax credit, which allows for the affordable uh, housing in the area. They're very excited. This is the first uh, one in Utah county in quite some time. And so they were pretty excited to see something happening down here. Salt Lake and Ogden has got, have gotten most of the allocations in the past. When we purchased the property, we let all of the tenants on the property know that uh, this was coming. They've known for a couple of years that it was coming. And all of them are on a month to month contract, so those can be terminated and we can move forward. That's it.
Thank, thank you. Uh, one question I have is, can you just explain how that affordable housing state program works and how it'll work for this development?
Yes. The uh, the allocation, we make an application to the state and federal government for an a tax credit allocation. This is a four percent project and they provide tax credits that allow us to sell or sit to a syndicator to allow us to build a quality building, just like anything else down there. But it'll, it requires us to uh, meet a sixty percent standard. So the tenants in the building will be paying uh, a lower rent, which allows teachers and law enforcement and and hourly workers to afford uh, apartments in this area where costs are prohibitive. And that, that allocation has been uh, allocated to us. And so we're uh, we we have a portion of it in tax credit. The rest comes through uh, other lenders. This one will be a through uh, HUD.
And when you say sixty percent standard, what does that mean? Can you explain that?
Means uh, sixty percent of the, the mean.
The mean uh, market rate?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's basically a forty percent discount rate on rent. Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question, please.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, just out of curiosity, what percentage of the building will be the um, income restricted units?
As, as, as I recall, all of it. I mean, the building would be uh, and I, and I may be wrong because I'm not uh, exactly sure, but uh, if not all, a good portion of it would be.
The other two like buildings we have are about eighty twenty, I think.
And that, that may be true too. I, I'm sorry. I don't have that information for sure.
And both those buildings have waiting lists on the affordable units. So I'm sure there's more than enough demand for this building.
The one, one of those units is right next to the startup building, correct?
Yes.
Right by the railroad tracks. Um, and then how does the income restriction work? Can you just explain that?
Or you, you have to qualify for it. You have to show that you're.
Yeah, you have to share your income uh, in order to qualify to be there.
Okay.
What is, what is the qualifying income level?
I, I'm not exactly sure.
Sixty percent of air, of average median income.
I believe you're right.
For this census tract.
It's a federal standard, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we're not arbitrarily deciding that.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I I have a question. Um, I mean, you can see the public support here. Uh, I, I dare say like ninety five percent of the people here are fans of rugged grounds, right? Um, does it make you, seeing this type of people here to support the, the business existing, does it make you reconsider having a commercial component as part of the new development, a, a mixed use? Seeing that there, there's some unmet demand for, for this business to continue.
Well, I don't know if they're here in support or not, but no, it doesn't. I think we've done good demographic study.
Can we please uh, bring the meeting to order? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
But we feel like we've done a good job in, in putting together a demographic study and and indicate what, what it's needed in the area. So we're comfortable. And as is the, as is HUD and and uh, the Utah Housing Authority and several others.
Commissioner Allen.
Since there was so much public interest, I just wondered if, it's really a question for you and the architect, if you've had any interest at all in maybe modifying the plan to preserve some of the architecture that was already there, the beams or whatever. You have no interest in putting commercial in it. Any interest at all in using what's there and integrating part of the heritage?
Um, have you seen the area? There's really nothing that we would really want to save.
But please can we, wait, hold on. Well, we'll have a chance to.
They're dilapidated buildings and they don't meet current codes and there are multiple issues with with uh, the structures that are there. And it really would not, if you've seen our site, we've pretty much utilized the site in order to get the the, the uh, density that we need. So I, I don't know that that would be possible.
But you can, was I mistaken? They can go higher, right? You're not meeting the height restriction.
Yeah, I think it was like eighty four feet and they could build up to a hundred feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, go ahead.
It, it would be cost prohibitive to do that because you'd have to change into a type of uh, construction that that would be non um, non combustible. So that the cost of that building to go any higher than what we are would be very cost prohibitive to do that. It would probably ruin the project.
If, if the building max was even higher than a hundred, would it, would it change that? That confrontation?
Well, parking would become almost impossible at that point. I think we've maximized what we can do there. And I think it's a beautiful design and I think it has uh, some some real demand and it's needed in the area and meets all the zoning. And so we're hopeful that that uh, we're providing a, a good quality facility for the, for the people and for the city.
I think it's worth noting, like, if I'm correctly reading this plan, the first two stories would be, would be concrete, like podium parking. So I don't, I don't, I don't.
One, one down, two up and then.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't think there, you know, with this plan, there would not be a way to like integrate the existing building into, because that would be like a parking structure, you know?
Well, I'm building on top of the existing would be impossible because they're not sound structurally.
I just am gonna interject real fast before we ask more questions. I just like to remind everyone, I really appreciate the passion, absolutely. And this is the most popular we've felt in a long time. There's a lot of people here. Uh, but, but we'd just like to say, please don't interrupt or, or speak over the speaker. We'll give everyone the chance to speak and I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, are there any other questions for the applicant? All right, uh, we'll call you back up if we have any questions.
All right, thank you.
Uh, before we move to public comment, I just want to do a couple of things of housekeeping. Um, Director Pepperoni, would you just explain to us, um, what is the purview of this and the power of this commission as it relates to the item before us?
So this is a request for project plan approval, which is an administrative function of the planning commission. Because it's an administrative function, there is very limited discretion in the planning commission's ability to um, add to what's already in the zoning ordinance. If the project meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the city has to approve the project. We've been in process with this developer for what, a year or more, um, taking these plans through and perfecting the plans so that they meet all the requirements of the zone. Um, during the dose of design process, there have been suggestions made by the staff based on city council discussions, for example. The city council got input from citizens about the need for pet amenities in, within these projects. Suggestion was made to the developer. They redesigned the project or modified the project to accommodate that. So they've been um, flexible and working with staff to account, to accomplish city council priorities that aren't even in code at this point. Um, so this, us, planning commission at this point actually has pretty limited uh, discretion.
And can you just describe the process by which the rezone happened and kind of how that happens just for those folks here?
Well, the initial rezoning was back in two thousand and nine. Provo City uh, rezoned a large area in this vicinity for transit oriented development. Um, the very north part of this parcel got rezoned from downtown one to I T O D um, as kind of a housekeeping item for this building. But in actuality, the zone change wasn't required because the downtown zone allows all the same things the I T O D zone does.
Right.
It was just some kind of a cleanup thing. But otherwise, the zoning has been there since two thousand and nine, anticipating exactly this kind of development.
Thank you. Um, and then the last other thing I'll say before opening to public comments is that we did receive many community letters and we have read them and really appreciate those. Um, so you're welcome to restate the points, but I just want to make uh, make it clear that we did uh, read them and receive them and wanted to appreciate them. Uh, so we will now open the hearing to public comments. If there are any neighborhood district chairs present, they will have three minutes to comment. The general public can then come up and have two minutes to comment. When your time is up, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. If we have questions, uh, you'll be invited forward to uh, come back and we'll answer those questions. So first off, I'll open up if there's a neighborhood district chair present. I'm guessing there's not. All right. In that case, I'll open it to public comments. You're welcome to come forward. Please state your name and uh, where you live for the record. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zion Gonzalez. I was born and raised in Provo, Utah, and I'm a barista at Rugged Grounds. When looking at provo.org, you will find Vision 2030, where they state core values that Provo City is striving for. Values that stick our, stick out are diverse employment opportunities. Values that stick out are diverse employment opportunities, sense of place in Provo, and how our heritage influences who we are, and safe neighborhoods and public places. We'd like to show you how our building, our place, already highlights these values. To the point of diverse employment opportunities with the majority population of Provo being LDS, I think it's safe to say that coffee shops are truly a diverse place for employment. Coffee shops and Rugged Grounds specifically serve all walks of life. We have regular BYU students come to study, get a warm drink, and have a bite to eat. It's not just our shop, there are several thriving locally owned coffee shops in Provo. In fact, Coffee Pod was pushed out by developers and Juice and Java by the city. Both were eventually able to start again, but at great cost. We share this with you to show how important coffee shops are to Provo. Those shops were rebuilt because people wanted them. Rugged Grounds is the oldest continuously operating coffee shop in Provo. Being almost eight years old, to lose it would be a huge disappointment. To the point of having a sense of place in Provo and how our heritage influences who we are, this valley was built for a group of people who are outsiders and seeking a safe place to live. Provo has become a vibrant city that houses people from all walks of life. Our building is tangible evidence of our heritage, being originally built as a mill. But has Provo forgotten that we were once outcasts? Are we choosing to gut our heritage by demolishing historic places in favor of bland apartments? Rugged Grounds is one of the last places that serves the non-homogenous crowd in Provo. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Stacy Wilk, I'm from Provo. Continuing on with that, to the point of safe neighborhoods and public places. Provo Commons LLC and Provo City claimed in their staff report that they're paving over vacant lots. This couldn't be further from the truth. Rugged Grounds is an important third place in Provo. The term "third place" is a term coined by sociologist Ray Oldenburg in his book, The Great Good Place. He says, "Most needed are those third places which lend a public balance to increased privatization of home life." Third places are informal public gathering places, parks, libraries, bars, coffee shops. They are places where anyone can go to interact with their community directly. Oldenburg also states that third places are the heart of a community's social vitality. As a barista at Rugged Grounds, I can confidently state that our shop is the heart of our community. If you don't believe me, I think the two thousand one hundred and nine signatures on our change.org petition, the three hundred and nineteen handwritten signatures here, and the majority of people here, are gonna show how much people actually care about the only third space in our neighborhood. There are a lot of neighborhoods in Provo that fight to keep their identity. Melissa Kendall will remember the work she did to stop BRT in her neighborhood, the tree streets. We are trying to preserve our neighborhood identity. I think that we can all agree that we want the same goals in our city. We want to feel valued as community members, and we want to see our city grow. So I'm gonna leave you with two questions. If we are displaced, how will the city council and the city planning commission help recreate such a vital third space? And lastly, how is Provo Commons LLC going to uphold the core values of Vision 2030? Thanks.
Thank you. No, no one likes referees, and so I feel uncomfortable, but please, no clapping. It helps us get through the comments a little bit faster. Thank you so much.
My name is Noah Krasznik, I live in Provo. I'm just concerned about these apartments generally. Do they truly solve the crisis that I am facing? I am part of the people, one of the people facing the housing crisis in Provo. I have a lot of numbers that are going to be off by forty percent now, it turns out. So, and that's good. I like the fact that this is affordable housing or, you know, low income housing is a better thing. But these houses are not, I mean, these apartments are not filling the need that me, my friends, the people I know are looking for. The people, you know, and to the point of filling this need, they claim how families will live here and not single batching or batching singles. But of the hundred and twenty-nine units, only ten are approved as two-bedroom apartments. So these, on average, two-point-nine-eight, according to the census, is the household size, are all going to be living together in a studio or sharing a bedroom. I'm no stranger to this crisis. My wife and I live in my mother's basement because we're expected to pay a similar amount for a studio apartment that settled families are currently paying on a mortgage on a five-bedroom house with yard and garden. None of the people that I personally know who live in these apartments, and all of the ones that are built, regardless of how nice they may be, think of them as anything other than temporary, bland, lifeless, low-quality places to, you know, have a bed, have a TV, make fix some food. And yet, they keep being built, they keep displacing third spaces that are vital community centers, and the rent continues to increase regardless. I'm sure we're all familiar with the proverbial saying, "A house is not a home." How much less than of a home is a high-density housing development? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Monroe Madsen, and I live in Provo. I'm a barista at Rugged Grounds Coffee Shop, and I have been for the past two and a half years, a position in which I take great pride. I think I have even served one of you an avocado toast. Should David Peterson be approved for this apartment project? My coworkers and I will lose our jobs, and Provo will lose a historic building that has proven itself to be a vital community space. Rugged Grounds operates out of what was originally a sawmill that was built in the nineteen forties, and its architecture is emblematic of Provo's vibrant heritage, a heritage that the team at Rugged Grounds wishes to preserve while still using this space to serve Provo's public. To demolish our building would have more dire consequences than one less coffee shop. It would be robbing the city of its third locations, as well as the citizens thereof of their second home. Rugged Grounds also works with local artists and artisans to prove, or sorry, in order to give the public an access point to local culture. Should locations like our shop be displaced, the city would be taking Provo off the map as a distinct and lively location, and actively killing off our own culture in favor of overdevelopment. If our shop is demolished, it will be a dark stain on Provo's local history, a moment when the city moved to betray its own people and eat its local culture from the inside out under the guise of development. I am not alone when I say that Rugged Grounds has helped me, make me who I am today, and has been a huge part of my world here in Provo. Members of the planning commission, I know you don't have a lot of sway here. And to the honor of the building, I ask you to please hear my experience and my words and understand that real people are paying the price for the lack of support for our community and for the lack of care from people like those at Provo Commons. We all understand that money brings growth, but to what end? I know that these are technically affordable housing, but I don't even really know what that means, and I don't know what judge is being used to make that claim. But at what end? All while pushing out small businesses and taking away our jobs and creating more problems than they're solving. Throughout this entire process, who was sticking up for us while those developers laid plans to demolish our livelihood? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Abe Lopez. I also live in Provo, and I'm just continuing what Monroe wrote. She writes, "Before I got hired at Rugged Grounds, I was a student who came into the shop every single day as a customer. During my time as both patron and barista, I have seen just how influential this shop and its building has been in the lives of the people of Provo and beyond. I've seen people come in on Christmas Eve because they have nowhere else to go, and our coffee shop provided them with a place to feel love instead of loneliness. I have seen people come from out of state and out of the country to enjoy our building in a cup of coffee that is as individual and attentive as the human conversation it is served with. I once met a man who had traveled across the world from Jordan and West Asia and told me that, quote, 'Your coffee shop has a peaceful soul to it that is rare to find,' end quote. Another time, I was told by an older mother that every time she comes to Provo to visit her son, she makes a point to come to our coffee shop because of its local charm and attention to detail. On Saturdays, we serve an entourage of BYU students who have formed a support group that congregates in our shop every week. I have watched people forge lifelong friendships that they maintain by meeting up in our shop every Sunday to share a coffee and a game of chess. If we lose our building, our business does not have the resources available to us to relocate. Please take these testimonials from Provo locals who have witnessed what our building means to the community as a reason to stick up for the people before it's too late. Thank you."
Give.
Hello, I'm Sadie Crowley, I'm from Provo. I am one of the owners of Rugged Grounds, the coffee shop at one fifty-six. To just a few things that Morley said, the building would be in less disrepair if the owner of the building took any care of it. We were aware developers purchased the property, but we have been kept in the dark otherwise. And while I do know that your hands are fairly tied, my business neighbor, who is also losing the location of his business, has been actively trying to buy the building to preserve it, just as a potential solution, because I know it's a hard situation. Let's see, for nearly the eight years we've been in business, we have been a central gathering place fostering connection and a vibrant supportive community, which I'm very blown away by tonight. The developers aiming to demolish our building received a twenty-five-point-six million PAB loan. While the intent of a PAB loan is to provide affordable housing, developers must demonstrate that their project benefits the neighborhood as a whole. This, as others have said, this project will displace the only walkable third space in our neighborhood. We are surrounded by high-density housing and transit stops. By remove us, they disrupt the fabric of our neighborhood, leaving people without a welcoming place to gather, whether it's neighbors needing a break from their apartments or commuters waiting for a train. We aren't just a coffee shop, we're an event for concerts, weddings, support groups. It's where small businesses showcase and sell their work, and it's where people find solace during holidays and celebrate life's milestones. We've hosted everything from film shoots to wakes, creating a space where stories are shared.
Hey, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Savannah McCullough, and I live in Provo. I actually live two blocks away. So, Rugged Grounds has a special place in my heart, as it does for many others. Rugged Grounds is a one-of-a-kind third space, a diamond in the rough, and truly brings a unique sense of community to Provo that is truly hard to come by. Once a magical prop shop, this place has been a part of my life for as long as I can remember, and I've seen it in every state of his life and mine. And although it's gone through many changes, the people that love and surround the space have never changed. I have lived in Provo my whole life, and never have I ever come across a small business that is as loved and taken care of as Rugged Grounds. Every time I bring a friend, a date, a family member to the shop, they all have the same breathtaking reaction. This place is truly unique, and this place is important. Rugged truly brings a much-needed energy to the Provo community that simply cannot be replicated. Aside from that, the gentrification of Utah County is unnerving and terrifying. Replacing cherished third spaces with beige high-density housing is like taking a hatchet to Provo's curated and historic scene. There have been decades rebuilding and decorating Provo. There have been decades spent rebuilding and decorating Provo with small businesses. And if a thriving business like Rugged Grounds can go down so easily, what does that say about the rest of Provo? In this day and age, with concrete suburbs expanding and history shrinking, saving small businesses such as Rugged Grounds has never been more important. Will a five-story concrete apartment building ever be as loved as Rugged Grounds is? The answer is no. Apartment buildings can be built anywhere, and building on top of a small business should not be the answer to expanding living situations in Provo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christian Adin, I'm a resident of Spring Creek and at Provo for twenty years. In addition to frequently rugged grounds in this building, a lot of people have already said the emotional impact of this building. I do also want to point out that I've worked on this street for over two years across the street at Thread Wallets, who now relocated. And I want to remark that that street is not anywhere close to being prepared to handle the amount of traffic that this building will be introducing. Frequently, that street is backed up two blocks in traffic, just waiting to turn onto university. And I can't imagine what would happen with over a hundred more cars. As I said, the building's already quite well-used, and what it truly lacks, if it was going to serve the community, was a replacement for the amenities that it's taking away. While it is providing amenities for the residents, it is robbing the amenities from everyone else in the community, and that is equally important to the residences it provides. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Bligh. The prophet said to plant a garden, so that's what I'll do.
What's your name? Can you say your name and where you live?
Oh, should I say my whole name?
Yes.
Oh, Bligh Wallantyne, I live in Provo, in the Joaquin neighborhood. Yeah, these words remind us that planting and cultivating are acts of care and stewardship and faith in our future. So in every choice we make, we plant the seeds that grow into the relationships, culture, and community of tomorrow. What kind of garden are we planting in Provo? Provo thrives because of its people, its creativity, and our care for each other. Like a garden, a thriving city nurtures these connections while embracing thoughtful growth that benefits everyone. High-density developments like the one proposed, they claim to improve affordability. In Provo, we've seen mixed results. These projects can raise surrounding property values and displace longtime residents and the vibrant arts community that makes our city unique. Without affordable and meaningful spaces, we risk losing the very heart of what makes Provo our home. Places like Rugged Grounds, they're more than businesses. They're gathering places where relationships grow, ideas take root, and community thrives. They're symbols of our city's identity, kind of like a tattoo or a CTR ring. They're a tangible reminder of the things we value and the legacy we're trying to create. So preserving spaces like this, it's an act of stewardship. Policies like adaptive reuse, which encourage developers to repurpose and integrate rather than just raise buildings, they offer a way to weave the past into the present and the future. So a culturally significant building fund could incentivize owners to maintain spaces that hold deep cultural meaning for our community. I heard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, Aaron Samudio. Provo resident, born and raised. This development represents how a community is disrupted in three easy steps. Step one, remove the gathering places. Community thrives in spaces where people come together, coffee shops, parks, churches, and community centers, these places. Places like Rugged Grounds and the building at one fifty-six West foster connection, belonging, collaboration. When they're removed, these bonds that hold the neighborhood together begin to fray. How will the loss of these vital spaces be addressed to ensure community connections remain strong by this plan? Step two, prioritize progress over people. When a community space is demolished in the name of development, it sends a clear message. Economic gains matter more than the people who live and work there. Displacing longstanding businesses and disrupting the local fabric risks replacing a vibrant community with impersonal, short-term solutions. How will the needs of the displaced businesses and people be met to prevent the erosion of the neighborhood's character by this plan? Step three, watch the spirit of the neighborhood erode. Without shared spaces like the building at one fifty-six West and Rugged Grounds, spontaneous connections disappear, and the vibrant rhythm of community life slows. Over time, what was once felt like a close-knit neighborhood become a disconnected, empty landscape. What steps will be taken by the developers to preserve the sense of belonging and vitality that these spaces provide to the existing community? Provo's strength lies in its people and the places that bring them together. By protecting these places, places like Rugged Grounds, we safeguard the heart of our community and ensure that the growth enhances rather than destroys what makes this neighborhood special. Thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit of inaccessibility. Thank you for making this accommodation for me. My name is Emma Sorensen. I live and was born and raised in downtown Provo. I'm like everybody else, I'm gonna refer to my notes. Okay. I hear that the developer wants to improve the area and create affordable housing. That's awesome. But I just want to say, what makes places that the public actually wants to live, like everybody else has said, third spaces, right? Coffee shops, and the fact that this is close to public transit is, I think, just another reason that people would want to live there, but you don't want to eliminate the reasons they want to live there. I get that this shop doesn't meet requirements. If anyone gets that, it's me. I barely, haven't even really been able to enjoy this shop because it's mostly inaccessible to me. And even I am here fighting for this establishment. I'll admit, I do not know how zoning works, and it sounds like there's not much that can be done to prevent the apartments from being built. But I hope that because this is zoned to be partially commercial, I hope that developers... I hope that developers would work with the small businesses and either leave them or create a space for them to continue existing and be a part of something bigger and better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fisher Wells. I live just around the corner from Rugged Grounds. And, uh, Rugged Grounds has been very important to me in feeling connected to my neighborhood. And I think that goes for all of us. I think even going to a coffee shop just a few blocks further away provides a very different experience. I don't know anybody, they don't know me. And, um, I have to remember to breathe. Um, going to a place like Rugged Grounds is very important because it's one of the few things that gives our um, neighborhood character. And I, it would be a tragic loss to all of us to see this, this rare thing that gives our neighborhood character be lost, um, to another apartment building. And I understand the need for affordable housing, and my last comment is just I wonder if the developer could be required to compensate the employees that they will be displacing should the apartment be approved. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Ryan Trimble. I live in Orem. Uh, but I've been visiting Provo, or Rugged Grounds for eight years and actually watched the owners and their friends build the place. I know the developer showed pictures of the outside, this dilapidated building, but if you go inside that place, and if you saw the pictures of that, you would see the handiwork and the love that exists in that space. I asked myself, what kind of argument could I make that would persuade you to, uh, forego this, 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 uh, proposal? I looked at the Provo City General Plan. And chapter three of the general plan is land use, and the first principle, Provo City's first priority with regard to land use is promote sustainable urban design. And I would ask you whether this development project is in line with that stated principle. Chapter five of the general plan is economic development, and the first stated goal there is encourage growth of local small businesses and startup communities. Now, I don't know if there's a better example of that than Rugged Grounds. The, the other thing I want to say here, um, that, and, and just a rebuttal to an anticipated objection, and that is, if this, if the project proceeds, uh, Rugged Grounds could reopen elsewhere, right? Where one door closes, another opens. That seems easy enough. We've seen it with the other coffee shops, uh, Juice and Java and Coffee Pod, who have, who have experienced similar tragedies. And, uh, while those coffee shops reopened, they're not the same. And, and the thing I want to say is that, uh, the, um, atmosphere of a space is important to it being a community hub. So, a business can be commercial and have clientele, but not necessarily be a community hub. And it's anyone's guess whether that will occur. Looks like.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Ike Bushman. I'm a Provo resident, longtime Provo resident. I'm an artist at, at this location behind Rugged Grounds and I guess Rugged Grounds is okay. Um, actually, it's more than okay. Um. A lot of beautiful things have been said today, and I don't know how much more I can add other than what my experience on that property has been in my studio or Rugged Grounds. It's a place where people are creative. It's a place where people have fallen in love. It's a place where people have had their heart broken. It's a place where if a tragedy happens in your life, there's someone there. I was working on a mural one day on that location. And the mural just said, "I wish you could see you like I see you." And I wrote this over and over and over as part of my process, right? And, uh, as I was working on it, there were two people behind me, and I'll go really quickly, that were watching me. And I kind of turned around and, uh, they were down on their luck, right? Kind of that area. And, uh, the girl was looking at it and she started crying. And, uh, I was like, what's wrong? Are you okay? Do you need help? And she just said, "No one has ever said that to me." And, uh, that's what that property is about. And that's what Rugged Grounds is about. That's what my studio is about. And I know that this community, it's a foregone conclusion. They'll go elsewhere. They'll find other places.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Emma Johnson. I've lived in this community for thirteen years. I'm a full-time production potter and run a studio out of Salem, Utah. Um, a dream I've had since I was ten years old. Um, I wanted to come here and let you know that this project negatively affects me and my business in very real ways. Since September, I have sold thirty-eight mugs in Rugged Grounds, in a space they provide to me for free. Um, this number may seem inconsequential in opposition of a project receiving a multimillion dollar loan from the government. But to my small business, these sales are vital. With the thirty-eight mugs we have sold at Rugged Grounds, my business can purchase a hundred and seventy-six pounds of dry glaze. Enough of our base glazes for over two years, or one thousand five hundred and eight pounds of clay. But if I take the money from just one mug sale from Rugged Grounds and I buy one bag of clay, um, and if I produce only mugs, the sales from, from that, from those mugs would be over five hundred and nineteen dollars. These numbers may not seem like much to you. Uh, but Rugged Brown supports me in a quantified and, and has a quantifiable impact on me as a person in this community's ability to live my dream, as a person in this community's ability to live my dream, sorry. Um, while we understand that you may say you have no authority in the matter of how business owners use their properties, you did have control over the, maybe not rezoning, but the combination of the lots. Um, the removing of the setback requirements and allowing the reduced parking requirements, all of which may or may not have, um, made the viability of this apartment building, oh, may or may not have made this a viable project. Um, if this apartment building hadn't been viable, the building that housed-
Thank you.
Resto Johnson, um, I live in Provo. That's my sister. I'm gonna finish her thoughts. Um, if this apartment building hadn't been viable, uh, or if this apartment building hadn't been viable, the building that housed Rugged Grounds may have been sold to the tenants of the building or another entity looking to preserve the community. We'll never know because behind closed doors and under tables, this project was enabled in every way possible. I'm only one of many who are uplifted and supported by Rugged Grounds dedication to building meaningful community in Provo. Something that the city of Provo could take notes on. My small business does not operate out of Salem because I am a member of the Salem community or because there wasn't space available in Provo, or because I couldn't afford the rent, or was unwilling to sign a long-term lease. My small business is in Provo because building owners are incentivized to home small businesses, and we were specifically told multiple times by building owners that they were looking for franchise businesses. Provo is quickly becoming a town of franchises and lotline to lotline apartment buildings and losing spaces where artists, small business owners, friends and neighbors gather to share and support each other. It isn't too late to withhold your support for this project. You do have the power not to approve this apartment building and protect a valuable third space in Provo.
My name is Grace Del Toro. I live in Provo. Couple of years ago, I was working in a warehouse, night shifts. I would work eight hours, go home, eat dinner for breakfast, and then sleep, and then wake up and eat breakfast for dinner, and then go back to work. I could have used a place like Rugged Grounds back in those days. I, there are so many people I know who have lived or are living lives where they just go to work and go home. They don't get to socialize very much. Like many people have said here, third spaces are really important for that. They're places where communities can come together, gather and support each other. I went to a fantastic birthday party that was held at Rugged Grounds, uh, with some friends, most of whom I barely knew, but I got to connect with them. I got to bask in awe of the architecture and, and the, the design of the building. It was amazing. And on top of this, I've seen business after business get killed in this town. Uh, just off the top of my head, um, uh, Good Move, uh, Pogo's, the, uh, Chicken and Pizza Place, the sports bar and grill that replaced Pogo's that just got shut down last year. Um, it's insane, like, it feels like where regular people are losing more and more spaces to just feel free from obligation and from responsibilities. And I can't help but wonder if there's another place where this allegedly affordable apartment can be slapped on top of that doesn't ironically negatively impact the people who are living and working and, um, socializing there. Thank you.
Thank you.
How's it going, everybody? My name is Soren. I am currently living in Mapleton, Utah. What I see when I see Rugged Grounds is I see a cultural hub built and maintained by Provo City's people and culture that is in turn not only growing and maintaining the culture itself, but also adding from other people. I'm moving here because of places like Rugged Grounds. And I appreciate the works to help with the housing, I really do. But how are we expected to trust this project and approve this, if it's people and culture? If the project developers see nothing worth saving, an hour ago, quote, "Nothing worth saving" about this space? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes. So I've, I've just gone out in the hall and discussed with the, um, developer what might be a possible solution to this, and the developer is willing to entertain replacing that street-level exercise area with a coffee shop. Um. Uh, staff would be happy to work with the developer and with a couple of representatives of the coffee shop coalition to see if we can make that work. Um, but he's heard the concern of the residents here and would, and is willing to entertain a solution.
What would that, uh, how, how that, I love it. That's great. I love it when we can solve problems here. How would that impact this item?
Well, I would suggest that, that because the planning commission can't turn this request down, I would suggest that it be approved. But the developer is committed to work with the coffee shop coalition and staff to come up with a coffee shop on that main level area. What that might mean is we may need to come back to the planning commission at some point in the future. If this impacts parking, there may be a need for some T D M parking reduction, which staff would be supportive of in this situation. Um. Seems like there was one other thing. Commissioner Kendall, you-
I was just gonna ask, could this be counted as part of their, in their, um, amenity space?
That's the other point I wanted to make is just looking at, just looking at the amenity space they have proffered already. They've included in the building, and Aaron and I were looking at the amendment you're gonna hear in your next item. It looks just like they're way over the sixty percent already anyway. So, I, I think they're gonna be fine as far as that goes.
Okay, Mr. Jensen?
I just was gonna clarify, in the amendment we're gonna hear next, it says that the amenity space can only be used for people who live there, but because this is not necessary to be amenity space, that wouldn't be a problem either?
I, I believe that's the case, yeah.
Okay.
And-
Sorry.
Would, would we want to consider in the, in the, in the second, item number six, where, where amenity spaces might include a mixed use?
I, I mean, because I think, I think this is a really good point that's being brought up in public comments, is when you look at I T O D, we allow mixed use, but a lot of these developments going in are not mixed use, and I think that's contrary to the intent of the I T O D zone in many ways. So I would love to find a way to incentivize more of these developments to have, uh, mixed use rather than just purely residential.
So, but just to clarify to the public, if the zoning ordinance is not accomplishing the goals the city is really trying to affect, that's a problem with the ordinance, not the developer. We need to fix the ordinance. So, yeah.
Agreed.
Uh, one, one follow-up question is, uh, why would you recommend approval of, is, is continuation an option or you recommend against that?
Well, continuation is an option, but because, um, they have very carefully met the requirement-
The findings of fact, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that context.
Uh, we, sorry, would it be appropriate to ask the developer if they would prefer to continue this item instead of having us reach a decision immediately today?
You're welcome to ask him up, ask him to answer any questions you would like.
Okay, so what I'll do then is let's finish public comment.
No, let's pause the public comment, because this may resolve a lot of the issues that they're-
That's fair.
This may resolve, right.
You might have to sit down after standing for a long time. Uh, is- Um.
Mr. Morley, would you come up, please?
Mr. Morley? And Mr. Morley, thank you so much for, uh, having this conversation. Appreciate it. Uh, so the question we have is, so there's, uh, would you be open to us continuing this item to kind of have this conversation?
We really can't. We're at this third, uh, continuance with the, uh, with HUD and with, uh, the Utah Housing Authority now. So we really need to move forward and get it permitted and moving forward, but we're certainly willing to entertain some discussions that might, and, and I don't know if this solves the problem. Certainly, there's some, uh, the building that's there currently is, is probably not, uh, well, not, it, it, it won't be able to remain, but, uh, we would certainly entertain a coffee shop that we could do in, in conjunction with, uh, the staff.
And we could also, uh, take portions of that coffee shop, maybe in using the interior design of the space, um, to kind of give a, a feel. It's not gonna be the same as what they have now, but it at least brings back some thoughts and some of that hard work, the murals and stuff that they could do within that space that they could make it back their, their own, but, um, but in a different environment a little bit, so.
I, uh, if you'll indulge me just a little bit, because I, 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 um, I, you've met the requirement, so you're doing this, you know, as, you know, and appreciate it. Uh, I think, um, can you just explain a little bit more about the problem with the continuance around HUD and?
Well, the, um, tax credits come with a deadline.
Okay.
And we're getting up against the-
If you don't get the permit approval.
Yeah, we need to get permit approval, close on it and move, get moving. And so, yes, we're, we're, we're in a situation where we cannot continue uh, the, the supplemental. We still have to get through the building process as well, or the building permit process. And so, we, we don't have unlimited time to, I mean, we've been working on this for like two and a half years.
Completely understand. Um, Director Pepperoni, question for you, is there, uh, this just long meeting, is there another step in this process if we approve it? Like, is there a, a final? It, it basically is just with the city at that point. There's no-
Yeah, the final step is issuing a building permit.
But there's no, there's no, uh, coming back through the planning commission. It's basically just with the city and the developer at this point.
There may be, if it looks like there needs to be a T D M, a reduction in the parking requirement. That would be if we work something out with the- Right. The coffee shop, and that would be a convenience to, and, and a combination to the people that we're trying to help here.
Okay.
And Bill, I think we're overparked by thirteen percent, so we do have some, some room in our parking to allow for-
Yeah, I think we have twenty-five extra parking spots.
So I think, I think we can accommodate that if, you know, if, if the coffee shop owners would be willing to, to sit down and talk with us and, 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 you know, plans are complete at this point, but we would be happy to, to look at how we could rearrange that fitness area and provide, you know, space for, for them to still continue to operate.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from the commission?
Just how, how can we, what kind of assurance can we get from you that, that this will happen? I mean, once we give this, this is our one chance to-
Well, unfortunately, it's not our chance, because if they meet the zoning requirements-
We have to approve it.
We have to approve it anyway, so it's out of their goodwill.
With the owners and, and try and work out a solution that, that is amenable for, for both parties.
We definitely will not, uh-
I mean, they make good arguments, right? This is, this is very good business sense. Like, if, if people love it this much, I think you'll get better, uh, occupancy if it's in the bottom floor, so.
We certainly don't want to be the big bad guys here, so.
Thank you. All right. Please state your name and where you live for the record.
Yeah, David Gonzalez, uh, Provo resident of twenty-five years.
Yeah, David Gonzalez, uh, Provo resident of twenty-five years. This is my adoptive hometown. Moved around a lot. Uh, settled here, raised our kids. Uh, one of our beautiful children is here in the front row. I am one of the OG regulars of Rugged Grounds. Uh, I've held offices in downtown. I am currently the owner of the Continental, which is going at sixty-three Center. And that's what I wanted to bring up is Center Street rocks. Center Street in Provo might be one of the very best downtowns in the Mountain West. It's one of the last cool little little towns, right? Under five hundred K people, it's got a vibrancy. There's people playing music all the time. And when I look at five hundred South and when I look at the train station, I go, why isn't there a forward-looking idea idea here in this body that is trying to create more and more of that vibrancy? Right? We can't just populate things with rubber stamp, oh, we need this and we need that. We need to think about what is the kind of environment that we're creating here? Because Center Street was a boring, terrible, dilapidated awful place twenty-five years ago when I moved here. I was a college kid. When when Rugged Grounds came to town, I'm sorry to get a little emotional, like, it was the coffee shop I wanted when I was a kid.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathan Ellis and I've been a Provo resident for two years and Utah Valley resident, Utah County resident for twenty-four years. I'm not sure I have too much to say. Um, I already resonate and agree with most every points that's been in favor of not developing this space. So I thought I'd just share what this space means to me personally. It's not just coffee. It's not just a place to chat and get assignments done. To me, it's a haven. It represents safety and care, sharing and peace. It's given me an emotional home I never had. And I speak from the heart when I say this place has planted the roots of some of my most cherished friendships and creative ventures. Uh, and I have the Old Mill Building to thank for housing all of it. Uh, I understand this is just a Wednesday for some of you in this state, possibly just a small speed bump in your plan to pave over a cultural hub. I'm just asking you to think twice before you wipe out a home that already exists for so many people. It's not a mystery that this development plan would positively maximize capital gains from this real estate. And I understand folks need places to live and things change, grow and evolve, but this has been a home of art and culture for well over a decade. So I'd like to end with a question. Will the decisions you make today value obvious local connection and expression or profit? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Brookeell Jones. I've lived in Utah County my whole life. I live in Orem now. Had to move from Provo because my place was too expensive. Um, I love downtown Provo, like people have said before. Um, I uh, my first cup of coffee was at Rugged Grounds. I always thought that I couldn't stay in Utah County to really feel authentic to myself and to feel safe. And then that's when I fell in love with downtown Provo and Rugged Grounds and and the whole vibe and the energy there. It's a safe space. Um, and like other people have said, I think most of us who go to Rugged Grounds would love affordable housing. Um, none of the places that say they offer affordable housing that I've ever tried to look at, it's still too expensive. So I don't know. I obviously I don't know the economics of everything, but I can see that that's not working. Um, I, Rugged Grounds, it's just a place that, it's not like other coffee shops. We have some other great ones here, but it is not the same, but they're not the same. I choose to go to Rugged Grounds from Orem multiple times a week because of the vibe there. I could go to multiple others. Um, but it's just a safe space for me and hope you guys can do something, so.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Todd Ingersoll. I uh, reside in um, American Fork and I am one of the renters at the building. I am not involved with the coffee shop, but I uh, I own an architectural fabrication shop um, that takes up most of the big unit back there. Uh, my business has grown exponentially over the last two years because of the affordable rent. Um, my ability to do what they, you know, said I could do with the building because it is in its state, they said you can put holes here, you can hang stuff, you can do things. Um, I've invested over thirty thousand dollars into the building, bringing in electric because I have CNC equipment. I have other tooling. Um, I weld, I fabricate, I do a lot of stuff in Park City, uh, Utah County. Um, basically, uh, what's happening now is uh, presenting a big challenge for me because a lot of the renters in this area don't want industrial fabricators or welders or machinists to be around. They keep pushing us further and further out. Um, and on top of that, the rental rates have gone through the roof and um, they've provided me a tremendous place here and the community is amazing. Um, because of renting here, um, I would go to Rugged Grounds just to take a break. I work really long hours. I put in fourteen to sixteen hours a day there. Um, I employ nine people and uh, because of that, of going into Rugged Grounds every day, uh, ended up meeting my future wife. We just had a baby. Um, it's really important to me because the people there support what I do. Um, Ike, who spoke earlier, actually moved out of a space so that he could make space for our equipment to come in. Um, we helped subsidize this rent in another portion. We all work together. The car rental places or the car shop places, the mechanics that are there actually working on all of my trucks and working on our trailers and they just help us do what we need to do um, to compete against a lot of the large companies that are out there. We're we're really small and we're trying to grow and we're trying to provide a lot of service to Provo, but uh, moving out of a space like this uh, has almost three.
Hey, thank you.
My name is Drew Marcoochi. Uh, I'm a resident of Provo and Rugged Grounds has been fantastic place for me. Um, I started my own business a year ago and Rugged Grounds has been what keeps me going. I'm able to go in and it's not the coffee that keeps me going, it's the employees you see on the front row right here. They know me all by my name. I know all of them by name. They know exactly what I order. And when I go into Rugged Grounds, I'm just met with smiles and good conversation. And as you've already heard from so many others, community is really the word that comes to mind with Rugged Grounds. Um, I've been so fortunate to stumble upon Rugged Grounds. And ever since I've gone, I've brought in countless other people and they all have the same reaction when they step in. You see something totally different. And just in the few years since I've been going to Rugged Grounds, we've seen three Starbucks come to Provo. So this is, it it feels a little backlash to have another small coffee shop shut down um, while these other big corporations come in. And when it comes to corporations, I understand the intent to bring affordable housing with this apartment building, but I don't believe it. I don't think it's gonna solve the issue and I don't believe that the people that are gonna live in that apartment are even gonna be thankful that it's there. Um, moreover, multimillion dollars of loans provided by the government um, doesn't paint a good view for me because in the end, this is a a for-profit project and all we're gonna see is another board of older white males with more money in their pocket.
Thank you.
My name's Kendall Jamison. I currently reside in Orem, Utah. And, well, I was born and raised in Orem. And I consider Provo a home because Provo, unlike Orem, has color. And Orem, I feel like is very gray, where there's, there's no culture there. Um, just as we keep the the downtown area looking um, very live and and vibrant with the old um, with the old buildings that currently reside there. I think that keeping Rugged Grounds is just as important. Um, because that is just as much of a part of downtown Provo as the rest of downtown Provo. And uh, just as we make our bed and and decorate our house and paint the walls, I see the same thing with Provo. It, I I don't have very much trust that whatever is going to replace Rugged Ground is going to have anything even close to the atmosphere that's at Rugged Ground. And um, that to me is one less reason to want to live in Provo. If the art and culture in Provo is not going to be there. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I'm sure you guys are even more tired than I am, but here we go. Um, I guess this is a less a plea to you guys, cuz I know that you guys' hands are tied in a lot of ways.
Yeah, please say your name.
Oh, sorry. I'm just forgetting everything.
Okay.
Um, I'm Luca Romney and I've lived in Provo for five years and I live in Joaquin right now. Um, sorry about that. Um, so I, this is more, I guess, a more a plea to the developers to keep their word to the deal that was just made and especially listen um, to these incredible staff from Rugged Grounds because they know how to run a coffee shop and I know the developers don't. Um, and how to create that community. I guess the one thing I wanted to say, cuz obviously a lot's been said, but um, I am a gay BYU student and you can just think about that, probably know what it's like, or maybe have thought about it at one point. Um, and Rugged Grounds is one of the few places in Provo that feel like I can just rest. And I do think that's worth something. I do think that's worth protecting. And so I hope that you guys will um, do whatever you can to join us in making sure that whatever comes next can maybe even capture a small part of what I've been able to experience in my time there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey y'all, my name's Brooke Hind Marsh. I am uh, like my, I have lived in Provo my whole life, uh, twenty-two years. And my family's lived in Provo since the nineteen forties. So, multi-generational, uh, I love this place. Uh, you guys can probably see why based on all the amazing people who are here today. Um, one of the things that's inspired me the most about Provo is the arts, the creativity, the ingenuity, the warmth of the people here. Uh, huh, sorry, feelings, but these guys especially, uh, all the brist is here at Rugged Grounds. No joke, I've had coffee in multiple states at multiple different uh, coffee shops. They were my very first and they're still my favorite. Uh, exceptional, exceptional coffee. They they know how to make a really good cup of dough, so. Uh, the talent of the people who run the coffee shop at Rugged Grounds is just amazing. And as an artist and somebody who wants to be an entrepreneur and has ideas for business, somebody who has been looking forward to and thinking of creating businesses here in Provo for a long time. I've sold at the farmer's market and I and I've made art and and collaborated with people here. The idea that somewhere so amazing, so valued by the community and so loved and run by passionate, skilled, amazing people, the fact that that can so easily be taken away from us as a community. The fact that business owners who put so much passion in the work can lose everything they've worked for with no say in what goes on, does not make me as a resident or as an artist or as a future business owner in Provo, feel confident in my safety and my ability to create a beautiful space here in order to create culture, in order to create a livelihood that I'm able to sustain and make beautiful. It doesn't make me confident in my ability to enrich Provo in the way that I truly want to, cuz I don't know if the things that I create here are going to be protected by the people who should be protecting it. So I would just encourage you guys, I don't know, I I know there's probably not much you can do in this case because we've already gotten to this point. But if there's anything you can do in the future to prevent spaces like these from being taken away from us, to prevent people from losing what they've worked for, I'd love to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
This one's gonna be a bit emotional for me. Um, my name's Cassie. I've lived here in Provo for five years. I was a trans BYU student. Over the last three years, I've been kicked out of my family. I've been forced to drop out of school. I've lost almost everything because I'm different. Provo values diversity. The only place I've really felt safe is at Rugged Grounds. I'm so glad that they've agreed to keep a coffee shop there. I hope they follow through with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Lyons. I've lived in this area for fourteen years, although I live in Vineyard right now. Um, I hear the timeline pressure and that there is money on the line in these decisions. Um, but that feels like a punishment for this community that didn't have a say at any earlier point in the process. As that feels very punishing to say, oh, because of this timeline for a thing that you didn't have a say in, it's just gotta go. Um, so the question that I have for this group is I hear you have little power, but that's not the same as no power. Um, there is this vote, each one of you has one. What happens if you say no? Do you get fired? Do you go to jail? Is there a fine? Do people just get really irritated? Like, what is the penalty to listening to this community? And if it's time, that's a question. What is the problem with kicking it back for a little while? Like, what is the personal cost that will take from you? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my, oh, sorry. My name is Evan Seal. I live in Pleasant Grove. I go to Pleasant Grove High School and I work in Provo. And I choose to commute to Provo every day to escape the monotonous suburban car-centric hell that is most of this valley. And Rugged Grounds has served as a place for me to grow as an artist and activist and simply been a place to escape the cold when I had nowhere else to go. It's very important to me to protect places like Rugged Grounds where anyone can go and experience authentic humanity and community. And I believe that to allow these developers to destroy a community center as important to the people of Provo as Rugged Grounds would be an action complicit in the attempted destruction of authentic humanity and community. The anti-joy crusade we're seeing happening all over our country in the name of capital. I believe that the men here representing these developers clearly only have concern for the livelihoods of Provo citizens as long as they are the few citizens willing to pay them rent. And I believe this because of their comment implying that there is nothing worth sa- worth saving about Rugged Grounds. And the fact that I've seen them talking to each other and not paying attention to the deep concerns of the people of Provo. I will not stand to see another community center removed from my community in the name of mundanity and the shaky promises of of a professional gentrifier.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna Kward and I live in Spanish Fork. Um, I'm a UVU student and I I could talk about how much I love Rugged Grounds and the community and the welcome, like welcoming environment as much as everybody else has, but um, my real question is how with the um, sorry, with the agreement to talk with Rugged Grounds and the possibility of having a coffee shop within that um, apartment building, I question the viability as well as the profit in that. Uh, I work at Starbucks in Spanish Fork. And um, I know for a fact that East Bay Starbucks loses money constantly and my store literally staffs them all the time because they just don't have the support of their community. It is truly just a few regulars and people passing by and it is nowhere near the demand that they should have. Um, and Rugged Grounds has ten times that, uh, just a few blocks away. Um, and the community is really what builds all of that and I'm I for one wouldn't go to the coffee shop that is here if it isn't really worked with and like have the um, owners of Rugged Grounds be involved. And I just question if it's actually a viable option and how profitable that would actually be compared to what Rugged Grounds is now. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Aaron Barrett. Uh, I've been living in Provo for over twenty-five years now. And uh, I also love Rugged Grounds. Um, I've been through one divorce in my life. And I went there and I was picked up there and I found myself there and I grew there. And I was hoping to get married there and I was greatly dismayed to hear of the threat upon the continuation of this business. I'm a Provo family. I have six kids and we're going on to seven. Uh, that apartment complex claims to be for families. That's not me. Uh, that's not uh, me, a Provo night or whatever you wanna call it, who's been raised here and grown a family here. It will not house me. Uh, I'm quite skeptical about the family labeling. Um, I'm very curious about the details about uh, the parking requirements that would need to be met if this was in fact a single uh, unit or dwellings for singles versus a family. Um, I'm also very Um, I'm also very skeptical about, uh, words that, uh, they'll try and talk with the owners to try and help the business continue, because we can all give vague words and vague promises, but we can also give concrete words and concrete promises with real numbers, real durations. And I haven't heard anything like that, uh, yet. That's what's being demanded of this council and this city. Uh, so I believe that this should be continued while we explore uh, whether this will have a negative impact on the traffic in the area, whether the parking is really going to work out, and how well this really would serve Provo families like yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Autumn Hindmarsh, and I've been living in Provo my entire life. As have many of my family members for generations. Despite this, I, for many years, felt disconnected from the community around me. For a long time, Provo seemed empty to me, filled with dull apartment buildings and large corporate businesses that hold little meaning. But recently, I've had the opportunity to explore more of those third-fit spaces, and I've truly realized the value of having a connected community. Places such as Rugged Grounds have shown me the beauty of Provo's history and people. I've found many of my current friends into places such as these, and I've gained a new appreciation for the people for the place I've lived in my entire life. The amount of love I have seen and experienced is inspiring, and I hope that we can make more efforts to fight for beautiful and rich places like this and the art they hold. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Summer Hindmarsh. I've lived here all my life, as have mm, all of my sisters. But nothing has compared to Rugged. I have been through so much, and it's been hard. Me and my sister, we're both high schoolers. And it's the only place I actually feel like I can be myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber Hindmarsh. I've lived in Provo for most of my life, and uh, recently I have uh, been as well struggling to find community. And, uh, I left the church. And there's not many places that you can find in Provo that are accepting and willing to, like, uh, understand people as individuals. They often try to fit people into boxes. And I find that places like Rugged Grounds try to harness the artistry of people and their souls. And it it helps to help people grow and to learn about our, all of our wonderful differences and uniqueness. The coffee there, yes, it is amazing, and, uh, the place itself is peaceful, and it's beautiful, and every time I go there, I feel like I'm being transported into this different place where I can just relax and breathe after such a stressful week, and I just don't think that there's anywhere like that. I mean, the library is nice and quiet, sure, but it just doesn't feel the same. And there are so many people that feel so strongly about how beautiful Rugged is, and there are so many people that are able to sell their art and other stuff. The earrings that I'm wearing right now, actually, I bought them from Rugged Grounds. There are so many cool and different artists that like to display their different works there. There are musicians that came there. There's people that love to come and, like, just play chess and chill, and I feel like it would be such a disservice and it would be stealing from the community if we tried to tear that down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joshua Zimmerman. I live in Provo. I'm one from, I'm from one of the low-income families that this housing has been created to support. My family's been able to eat sometimes only because of the Community Action Food Bank here in Provo. My family has also moved seven times in my life, so I'm used to looking at apartments that are too expensive for us to ever afford. So you'd think that this apartment's being proposed would be exactly the sort of thing I've been looking for. But by living in so many places in my life, I can tell you that the thing that is affecting my family the most is not the amount of money we have had in our bank account or the amount of space we have had to live in, but rather the people that have been there to support us in the places we've been able to go. By taking away Rugged Grounds from this neighborhood, you will not be giving the low, the low-income families the chances you think it may give them. Instead, it'll be taking away one of the few places in Provo that actually lifts up its residents and makes it a place for people to create a life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Suzanne Christensen. I live on Mount Beast. Um, I just wanted to say, I, I saw the relief that washed across the, the panel when, I'm sorry, I don't want to say Mr. Vest. Um.
Mr. Pepperoni.
Mr. Pepperoni, really, um, uh, came in and said, the developer's willing to work with you. He'll give you, he's gonna squish up his other things so you can have a little bit of space, and I saw that relief. When I was on the verge of getting a divorce, a whole bunch of nice people came to me and said, oh, I know he's a bad husband, but imagine what it'll be like as an ex. You don't want to go down that road. And that's kind of what I'm thinking here. I know Rugged Grounds, not a coffee drinker. I love that space. Stacy is my daughter-in-law. I have seen, I don't know what the laws are about landlords and how they care for their buildings when they have a renter, but I would say there has been criminal neglect. I think it has been deliberate in order to get the building to a stage where he can push it away and say, look at the favor I've done here. I, just for a minute, you guys, imagine yourselves being the people with all this support who forced him to squish up his stuff so he can, you can have a coffee counter. And entering into a business relationship with him as your landlord, having had him as your landlord. I know property laws protect property owners. As the owner of a home, I'm really grateful for that. I know that if you check all the boxes, there's not a lot you guys can do. I know there are people here and people you have access to who can help these guys. I know that. You know that. I am asking you to help them get out of a toxic relationship and into a good space where they can continue to serve this amazing community. I am so proud of them. And I hope that you will help them figure out how to help themselves.
Hi, my name is Gerard Kano, and I currently reside in American Fork. Uh, I've been going to Rugged Grounds since I was fifteen, and I am currently twenty-two years old. Sorry. Um, I have had an amazing experience. With the people at this coffee shop. A very long time. I grew up in a very abusive household, and I had nowhere to go. For a very long time. And it became my second home for escape. I would drive thirty minutes from Santa Quin every week when I wasn't in school. And when I got out of school and didn't have a job and was struggling, I would drive thirty minutes when I had very little gas and very little money. Because it is the most comforting place to be. It was my first home. And it is now my second. I was Sadie's roommate two years ago. And when I tell you, I have never seen someone so passionate and hardworking and wake up so early when we lived with really crappy roommates who would party until God knows when, she would still wake up and go to work. And she was, when she was going through the hardest times of her life, she still had a smile on her face. That's all.
Thank you.
My name's Jensen. I live in Provo, and I work at the startup building just around the corner. Um, I just want to second the plea to the developers to hold true to your word. Um, you've seen the community. It's a wonderful community. It's amazing. Um. And it might not be the most financially beneficial thing. It might require sacrifice. You are not required by law, I don't think, at all to withhold that. That's, yeah, I'm getting shakes. That's as far as I understand it. But I hope that some of these arguments, you've heard, I mean, you know, we've been here for three hours. It's been a while. And I hope you just really take that into consideration and and do the hard thing and work with them and make, try to make something that just has an ounce of the character and the history of Rugged Grounds. And so I just hope you really hold true to that and really do it honestly with integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. Uh, Tana Hoover, Provo South. Um, as I've listened to this, uh, my comments are more directed at our congregation versus our commission today. I've heard a lot of fear and a lot of sadness as if the people themselves are being demolished. Which, if the people created this safe space, they're not being demolished, right? Um, being uh, I've been confined, I necessarily want to say confined to a bicycle for five years, which is, yes, I've worked with Rugged Grounds often being that it's near public transit in my neighborhood. Um. Yeah, I think that if you have to go so far, if you're going, if Orem is so gray, there's probably someone else stuck in your community in Orem or in Santa Quinn or in your large apartment complex that you feel so disconnected from that probably wants a smile too. The same that our lovely baristas have given smiles to us and created these spaces. The people themselves are not being demolished. So I, I would like to kind of reiterate that from all the fear and the begging and, like, you know, I, I've been thinking a lot about Kamau's concession speech, right? Now is not the time to, to step back and, and be fearful, but to step forward and actually put in the work, so. Yeah, our communities are there. Smile to a stranger. Say hello to your neighbor. They're a lot kinder than you think they are, and the spaces and the people still do exist, and we are very much here.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, guys. Uh, my name is James Holbrook. I'm an employee at Rugged Grounds. I've been, uh, honored and blessed to work there for the last while, and I consider myself extremely lucky to, uh, have a lot of love in my heart for the owners, uh, along with many of the folks who came here to speak today. I don't have much to add on top of what already has been said, and I don't have anything prepared, but there is, uh, um, I guess I want to add, like, an additional, uh, level of agreement to most of the pleas that you've heard today. But the one thing I feel like has been missing is I just want to extend a bit of thanks and appreciation to y'all for uh, making this, uh, what feels like a warm and open space for a lot of communication. In other words, thanks for listening. And I hope in your own pursuits, uh, you're able to be met, uh, with such warmth as you've extended to everybody here. So I really appreciate that. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, all right, I think we've reached the end of public comments. I, I don't think I've ever heard so much love and, uh, passion in public comments before. Thank you for enriching us with that. I am going to do a five-minute recess. Um, we've been up here for about two and a half hours, and I am having a serious biology need right now. Um, so, uh, we're, we're gonna come back in five minutes. Um, let's say, uh, actually top of the hour, so eight minutes, seven minutes. And, uh, then we'll commit, continue with commission discussion. Thank you. Can I reconvene, please, if we can? It's nine o'clock. You're welcome to continue conversations, but please, if you could go outside the chambers, thank you. Uh, wow, that was fast. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to, uh, begin discussion among the commission and I'll open it up. Commissioners. Commissioner Hill.
I just want to say something to everybody that's come tonight and just say thank you for, uh, really for me, what was a great lesson in community, um, in camaraderie, uh, in fellowship and also in civic engagement, right? That this is what it's about. Um, and I've come away learning things from, from each of you. Um, as you know, uh, our question tonight is, do they kind of check the boxes for the zone requirement? But I want you to know that beyond just this issue, your comments have had an effect and they will affect us as we look at, you know, how zoning is done in the future. What do we look at when we're rezoning? Um, does our plan address community spaces well enough? You know, things like that. And so your comments will, will have an effect on us and, and will drive how the city, uh, develops in the future. Um, I'm grateful for, uh, the developers' willingness to work with this community. Um, as you know, that's not something that's required. Um, and so I'm very grateful for them and I hope that they will be true to that and move forward in good faith to find a solution that works for everyone, to create a space. Um, and that brings me to my final thought. Um, I really liked the comments about how you, the people, are the community, right? The, the coffee shop is the space and that space may change. It may not look exactly the same in the future, but if the community is there, it can have the same feelings and love that you've shared, uh, with us tonight. So with that, I think, uh, it's been a good, a good night and a good example of community engagement on a difficult issue, right? Um, with that though, I think, uh, I do not see anything that the, that does not meet the zoning requirements, right? That would be our standard that we have to evaluate. And so I think, uh, I'm ready to move forward and, and, uh, go forward in good faith that the, the remaining issues will be worked out.
I have some comments.
Commissioner.
He knew exactly who was going to start talking. Um, I too, I, it was really cool to see this community come together tonight. Um, it's a great example of people helping people and meeting needs in Provo. One of the things I love about Provo especially as it's evolved in the last 10 years is that sense that everybody belongs here. And so, thank you for helping us see how important it is to create spaces as we plan the city. Um, we've talked a lot about creating public spaces and creating mixed uses and I think you've given us lots of good ideas for what that should look like. Um, there were some comments that gave me some ideas tonight. I just wanted to share those with the commission. Um, I liked the quote it from the general plan about sustainable urban design and I believe that includes commercial uses. And I think that, um, we've talked a lot about, um, our zoning requirements and um, the ideal and we know that the ITOD zone has, um, has a mixed use component to it, but it's not mandatory. We've also seen it not go well when it is mandatory. And so I don't know if we could have further discussion about how to incentivize it. I don't know, I guess the property adjacent doesn't have super amazing commercial success, but there's something magical about this place. And so maybe we need to look at places that are going well and how to work with economic development to, to combine them with, with uses that are compatible instead of making them find each other. Um, that having been said, I wonder if the Economic Development Director could meet with some of these players and see if, if they can help create this space in a way that meets the goals of the general plan and the goals of the community. Um, and then I had one other thing about traffic. Someone said that the traffic on Fifth South is backed up and I know that often happens when the train tracks are blocked and everyone's trying to take a different route. So I wondered if Mr. Day, um, could address what sort of plan there would be with the current plan that's being presented to us? Because that would be the only thing that might deter me from thinking that this many units could thrive in that space. So how do we, what's the ingress egress plan for the 129 units that are being proposed? And, um, I know that, um, there's some road closures with the, the new construction that's happening next to the overpass. And so what, what's the long-term plan for getting people in and out on 500 South?
Okay, so my name's David Day with Public Works. Wanted to make sure and introduce myself. Uh, Fifth South is, um, evolving, right? So next summer, the bridge on University Avenue and over the railroad tracks will be under construction. Um, eventually, the left turns out of Fifth South will be eliminated. Um, so, uh, entrances into Fifth South will be right in, right out. So you'll, you won't be able to make left turns into Fifth South, so that will affect it. Um, we're planning on, uh, angle parking up and down corridor to increase, uh, parking availability. Um, the width of the road can accommodate more traffic than, um, these, um, high-density housings can produce. That doesn't mean that it's at a comfortable level for everyone, but the capacity is there and there's a difference between how much a road can handle capacity-wise and what's a livable place to be with the traffic that's passing by. But the, the addition of, of, of this project to, um, the traffic on the road would be something we've already anticipated with the size of the road. So it can handle it. It, it'll just increase incrementally as we add these type of projects to it. But the roads are, are gritted out so that it can handle this kind of volume.
So I imagine the developer would be required to put in curb and gutter, which would be an improvement.
Yeah.
And then will you stripe the road so that there's two lanes and a turn lane? Or what's the, because right now there's no striping at all, right? It's just one big mess of pavement.
As things develop and we, and we overlay roads, we restripe them with the new configurations. And this, this Fifth South is getting close to that. We have the Mill Race to the east that's still under construction. So when that kind of wraps up and some of these others wrap up, we'll, we'll overlay the road and restripe it and that would incorporate angle parking, uh, a lane east and a lane west.
Would there be a, a third lane in the middle for turns or it would just be the two?
There wouldn't be room for that. It would just be the two lanes and then angle park.
And will the bridge expansion on University Avenue make getting out of 500 South easier or probably about the same? I know they're going to widen it and make the bike lanes and pedestrian access better.
It's hard to say. Um, but my feeling is it'll make it a little bit easier because it'll be right in, right out.
Less conflict.
It won't be the, the cars trying to go either through or left. And that's the major delay and the most dangerous movements.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shin.
Thanks. I, uh, I was saying a second ago, I think that the, over the last year, the meetings that I've, the city meetings that I've been to that have, have had the most turnout have been this one and, um, meetings talking about funding for the, for the library, um, which I think is a testament to how much people value these spaces and, um, and the importance of the community events they, they enable, um, the gathering places they are. So I'm, I appreciate everyone who came to speak. Um, uh, public speaking is hard and I know there's a lot of, um, a lot of care and a lot of thought given into the messages that were shared. It's not often that we get the chance to feel like we're doing public speaking too, to the group that is here. Usually it's only a few people. Um, so I'm, I think it's, it's a lot of, you know. So to the, I think to, to the people who have come here, you know, and, and, and shared, shared their thoughts and their feelings, you know, um, I think it's worth giving a little explanation to kind of why the situation is the way it is with why the city has said, you know, like our, our discretion is limited on this issue. Um, when, when other play, in other cases, it's not always, you know? Sometimes the city has the ability to say, you know, no, we're going to send this back. Um, and really it comes down to this, the, the zoning with this property, right? So the, the ITOD zone in place before, you know, that, that grants the right for development. Oftentimes, when you have these new developments come in, they require a rezone, which means going to the city council who can, who can choose to approve or deny that, right? In this case, the zone, as we heard earlier, the zone is already in place from, you know, like 2009, um, which is why the property owner, you know, is, is coming to us as a formality with this meeting. And I, I say that just to, to help understand for those who might not be, have come to many of these meetings before, why this one is different from other cases, you know? Um, and I think it's, I, I think it's so great that so many people are, are coming and, and are interested in being part of the process here. Um, to that point, um, I think that many of us feel agreement that this is exactly the kind of thing that we run, see in Provo. Small businesses like Rugged Grounds, local coffee shops and cafes and stores, these are the kinds of things that really do make our neighborhoods so vibrant, you know? And, um, you know, we all, as, as was mentioned, you know, our general plan goals do align with the idea. We want to support small business, right? We, we, we want to find places these businesses can thrive. Um, I'm, I'm very happy that we were able to, you know, to possibly find an intro towards a win-win situation here. I think that is, I think that's great news. Um, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And I think for those who are, are interested in, in helping make sure that that does happen, uh, I think the best thing to do is to do what you all have done today, which is to show up and make your voices heard and, and let people know that there is something that people really care about here, that it could be a viable, uh, you know, a real viable business opportunity. I think, um, you know, some people might look at a coffee shop as a coffee shop, but, uh, you know, to a developer, what a cool amenity it is to be able to say, you know, you can live here, not just in any old apartment, but in an apartment on top of, you know, the coolest coffee shop here in Provo, you know, with such a cool history and people who care deeply about it. Um, I think that, that goes a long way to show that there is, you know, there is a real, uh, community that's built up around this place that cares about it, that will want to see it continue, want to see it thrive. Um, and so, yeah, I, I, I would echo the sentiment that this gives us a lot to think about going forwards, about how we, how we make decisions about our, our land use and about the kinds of business that we, that we are able to support, that we are able to encourage, you know? I mean, personally, I would love to see a lot more business on this kind of scope and scale. Repur, you know, repurposing an old building, uh, fitting into an existing neighborhood, creating a space that actually exists for the local community. Um, I, I'd love to see more of this. Um, I think a question that I'd love to dig into is like, how, you know, how do our regulations and the way that we choose to do things, um, do they encourage or do they discourage more of this kind of thing from springing up? You know, more places like Rugged Grounds to be able to, you know, to, to come and thrive in our neighborhoods. Um, I would, I would love to hear, you know, I would love to have us continue this discussion and see what, you know, what, what more we can do looking to the future beyond just this, this one case, so. Um, yeah, I think that's, that's all I'd say. Thank you all for coming.
Commissioner DiSotto.
Yeah, um, I, I also really appreciate your comments and I am very like pro-walkability, hyper-local, um, everyone probably here knows, uh, on the planning commission, I'm not, I'm not a NIMBY, even though I live in a NIMBY neighborhood, um, and this is exactly what we need, um. I, I've lived in France and, uh, my husband's from Mexico and we talk a lot about how there's a lack of this sort of cafe culture, this community culture here and you're exactly what Provo needs. Um, and yet were I, were we able to actually stop this? Because it's not just, you know, if it weren't just an administrative thing, I still would feel a little conflicted, to be honest, because we do, people do need housing. And I know there are doubts about how affected this will be. However, one of the things that we, uh, Jeff especially talks about a lot, our chair, he, um, is, uh, the bias toward people who are already here in our housing. The bias toward excluding people who want to live here. And I'm, that's something that I have a bit of a conflict about because, um, especially knowing this is a low-income housing, may not be the lowest income level housing, but it is going to meet a need of people. Um, and ultimately this kind of comes down to like people, a people need and a people need. Uh, we need shelter and we need community. And so, um, I really, really implore the, uh, the, our developer to, um, to go through with the work that needs to be done to make this work. Because I really want this to be like a yes and situation. Um, and I also agree, I think there's so many things where we can make these viable in neighborhoods. And I think a lot of what we've been talking about, about incremental development and, um, that gentle densifying that we've talked about, it allows, it would allow for these kinds of little, little places to pop up in neighborhoods and give that texture and, and culture to our neighborhoods without making it all generic. So I hope that that's kind of what we're going to be going for and favoring. Um, so, yeah, I just, I, I guess I heard a lot of comments that I also hear from people who don't want that density and incremental development in their neighborhoods and they're like single-family neighborhoods. So that was an interesting thing for me because I feel like what I hear usually in these meetings is that no one wants to make, no one wants to lose anything. There's growth happening, change happening. It happens because we're humans. And, um, but nobody wants to sacrifice the thing themselves. And not that I'm saying you should sacrifice all this, but, um, just to be aware, like, I guess, it's given me some perspective on, on kind of compromise, the compromise that has to happen sometimes in communities where there are varying needs and varying passions and varying, um, uh, things that are important to people. So I just want to thank you for expressing yourself because, um, this is what we need in Provo. We need people, I would love if every meeting were this long and we could hear from this many people on every issue. Because this is what makes us get better answers, the more correct answers and to fix the things that we are not seeing. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner DiSotto. Any other comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I'll go. Uh, first off, I just want to say I'm, um, my heart is moved with compassion. Um, but to those who spoke and shared their feelings, uh, I wish I could comfort you in some way. Um, that being said, uh, three things I want to bring up too. And, and they're kind of similar to what Commissioner Jensen brought up, the, the density of the area. I think when we, when we're looking at the ITOD area and some of the developments that are going up, like the 400 Element, the Franklin Apartments, was it Franklin? And, and, and this project and that we're looking holistically, that these roads can meet the capacity, um, that they can handle the capacity of, of a full build-out of an ITOD area. Um, and, and we kind of need to be a little bit forward-looking for, for the ITOD area, the, the, the East Bay area and some of these other high, uh, fast-developing areas. Uh, second would be, um, yeah, the commercial uses in the ITOD. Um, and, and I wish, uh, Director Mori was here too, um, to, to help somehow. I don't know, we've been, Provo City's been wrestling with mixed use and, and residential, commercial, um, blending together. Some, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. And I don't know if we figured it out, how to make it be successful, but, um, with the density that they're, that we're having in this neighborhood, um, it, to, to not have it served by, have space for a commercial thing is just something as fundamental as your, your corner coffee shop is, uh, is a travesty. Um, and then the last thing with affordable housing, um, you know, if, if this project was proposed in any other neighborhood, there would be 20 people showing up and they'd all, uh, it'd be re, demanding that we reject it because they can't stomach the thought of affordable housing in Provo in their neighborhood. Um, they can't stomach the thought of a low-income person living They can't stomach the thought of a low-income person living next to them. But when we come here, I don't, not many people even spoke out against that. In fact, they were supportive of it. They just wanna have both, right? So just the comment, the the affordable housing government subsidies, which I think a lot of people shared a sentiment that they were upset with. They only exist because without affordable housing doesn't get built. And and when it does, the community members come and they shut it down. And so I'm to have a a project where uh, and not all the developers want to it's not worth the trouble to apply for uh, government subsidies. It's just too much of a hassle. Sometimes they lack the expertise to handle applying for that. And so to find a a developer who is willing to to make it affordable, it's it's not, it doesn't come too often. Those are the only comments I have, other other than I I have a deep amount of empathy and compassion for the people who've spoken today.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Any other final, any other thoughts, Commissioner South?
I can be really fast because it's a lot of the same. Really do appreciate the strength of our community and you guys represent that and just really appreciate that. Community development work is hard, it takes time. And you spent some tonight, and I hope you continue to engage and participate in our community in in meaningful ways. I just wanna make sure that my voice is heard on the mixed-use aspect. That is something that we have struggled with, at least I have struggled with trying to understand. And maybe Director Pepperoni, you can help us in leading us through some additional study sessions to think about best practices there. Where has it worked well? We've had some really great projects and we we need more of that, so that's it. Thanks, thanks to all of you.
Commissioner Kendall.
Just echoing the same sentiment, thank you for being here tonight. And you have people on your side. So I'm grateful to the developer for agreeing to work with the coffee shop to find a space that works. And I also agree that the beauty is in the people and some of the space. So make the space the same, salvage what you can and put it back in. And I think it will be a great thing for that developer in his building to have you as the center and the draw. People wanna live there. So thank you for what you've contributed. And I learned this years ago when I started getting involved in city affairs, that when citizens get involved, we get better projects. That's what happens. So thank you for your time tonight and for letting us hear from your heart.
Hey, Commissioner Allen, I feel like everyone said anyone, and not put you on the spot, but before I jump in.
I thought some eloquent things were said tonight, so well done. There are some comments that I thought, oh, I'll be remembering that, that was a pretty turn of phrase. And I definitely think the passion and and the persuasion was acute, particularly at the beginning. I'm falling off now because it's past my bedtime. But I I would love to know more about the mixed use, and I think I brought that up initially, that proposed that. I I anyhow, I do think there are sympathetic ways to bring in an architecture that's existing. I do agree that probably the foundations need to go. But I think the architect, it would be a great opportunity for any designer to try to do that. And I hope that if the coffee shop does go in, that you guys will all come and go and patronize it and make it a viable place because we'd like to see more. And if this one works, then there will be more.
Thank you. One one note I just have for city staff is just as, you know, we've we've talked a lot about the mixed use. But one thing that by reflect on the ITOD zone, I really agree with the theory of you want to put higher density closer to public transit. It really does help lower-income folks. I think someone mentioned they were confined to a bicycle, driving is really expensive, it's really hard. So I I really love that. The thing that I think we're kind of missing or it would be interesting, interesting to revisit in this. Maybe we need to talk to city council in the general plan is like, I think it'd be a mistake if all of ITOD becomes massive apartments like this without, you know, without mixed use. I think that would really be unfortunate, to be honest. I think we need to think about not only mixed use, but pocket parks, like how do we make this a really great neighborhood and livable space? I had a friend, actually a colleague, visit from Berkeley, California. He's a designer and and I, we were working out of the startup building right there and we were walking around. Actually, I think we walked past, I wish I would have known the coffee shop was so great, I would have taken him there. But he said, this really reminds me of some of the neighborhoods in Portland, kind of before they became really, really cool. And I think there's an opportunity to make that space really amazing if we just have a, like, I think when the commenter said, you know, just have a little bit of intention, how we design about it, design and think about it. And so that's just something that I wanna put as a note.
I so agree, I so agree.
Yeah, it could, yeah, so I just, I just really wanna be careful about that as as that space is going to have a lot of development pressure. All right, any other discussion comments or is anyone wanting to do a motion? Actually, I wanna make one more comment, just for the public. We're very lucky to have a great, wonderful director of city planning. Part of the reason why Main Street is the way it is is because of Mr. Pepperoni and a lot of his work and his staff's work. And so while we don't necessarily have legal teeth in sort of the gentleman's agreement or gentleperson's agreement that we made tonight, I do know that city staff will follow up and talk with the developer and really try to make it happen, like I really trust them to do that. And there was a comment made earlier, which I I really appreciate the provocation around, you know, what happens if you vote no? And the reality, sorry, my microphone is bugging me like crazy. It it's fine, I think it's stopped misbehaving. The the reality is, is that, you know, the city only has power in as much as we're taking legal action and we would be not taking legal action. And so we don't, you know, they're meeting the requirements by the book. And so as much as like, I was personally moved by many of the stories and and in ways that deeply touched me, honestly. Ultimately, it's not that we, like, we just don't really have the power unless we, I mean, I I did try to find ways we could do it. But they're meeting the the requirements of the zone, and the way zoning works is you basically have a right granted to you by zone. And so as long as you're not in frack, you know, infraction, sorry, unless you're not breaking the rules of the zone, you have a right. And that's good, that's good. All of us who have, if you have property, you don't want the city to be able to say, hey, we don't like the way this thing looks here, and they just arbitrarily make you, you know, destroy your house or whatever. And so it's important that people have property rights that are given to them by their zones. So that's just a little bit of context on like what we're dealing with when we're saying that like our hands are tied, and hopefully that makes sense. All right, anyone wanna make a motion?
I actually just wanted to point out that this building will have a ten-foot setback from the side, from the property line. And initially, that seemed really, really small to me, but I'm sure in a downtown zone, that's plenty. And if you consider the, whatever goes up next to it eventually will also have ten feet, that'll be twenty. So I just wanted you guys to visualize what it was we were approving. I'm assuming those are the setback requirements, but it's gonna be a big building and I hopefully it is a happy place. Has a lot of great amenities that we don't usually see. So I think it's gonna be a really nice place.
If I had known we were staying so late, I would have ordered some kind of drink to stay awake or something.
If only there were someone who knew how to make coffee.
So are we, I guess, based on the discussion we've had, it it sounds like effectively the vote is, we're not gonna be on, you know, continuation is not on the table right now, is that?
Most of them wants to argue for it.
Yeah.
You just need to be able to say why.
On why there's a.
You can justify that.
Yeah. And I think in this case, it needs to be that there's some concern about the zoning requirements not being met or.
Yeah, I think we've we've seen that, that it seems that we're, you know, the developer is, has done their their due diligence with that.
One thing I really love is that a lot of times we see these ITOD developments come with a TDM where they're asking for a a reduction in parking, and I appreciate that this developer is not asking for a reduction and actually has a little bit of a cushion built in. That to me shows.
For the coffee shop.
Well, they didn't know that at the time, but hopefully it's helpful in those plans. I just think that's great. It shows me they're not trying to cut corners and I hope that's, I hope that continues.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. I move that we approve the requested project plan for a new one hundred and twenty-nine unit apartment building on the condition that a final plat is approved by CRC and is recorded. This is for item number five. David Peterson requests project plan approval for a new one hundred and twenty-nine unit apartment project in the ITOD interim transit-oriented development zone.
Actually, Mr. Pepperoni, can I just ask, are we allowed to include an encouragement?
Yes, I think it would be appropriate to say that the planning commission is taking the developer at his word that in good faith, he will work with staff and with representatives of the coffee shop to make a, make a space that.
Yeah, can we add that to the motion, please?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to state that in addition to the condition that a final plat be approved by CRC, that the planning commission wishes to state that we are taking the developer at his word with his goodwill gesture to work with the coffee ground, I'm forgetting the name now. Rugged, I'm, it's past my bedtime too. Rugged Grounds, that's it. Rugged Grounds Coffee Shop, to find a space within the building.
I'll second. Any discussion on the motion? All right.
I.
I.
Nay.
I.
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 Do you wanna say your name?
I don't need to articulate anything else.
Okay, all right, I'll vote I and that passes eight to one, all right, eight to one. All right, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
We need to continue item six.
Do we need to motion to continue item six? Well, because we said we wouldn't start any item after nine o'clock, that's part of our.
No.
Is that how we should do it?
That's what we do, we always.
Okay. All right, can we make a motion to continue item six on the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we continue item six.
Johnson can have it.
Uh, let's go, any discussion on the motion? No discussion on the motion.
I.
I. I.
I.
I.
I.
I'll vote I, continuation passes unanimously, and then do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
A second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.